Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Karen Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of October 11th, 2017. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Parleye.
Here.
Well, welcome, everyone. We are so glad that you are here participating in the civic process. It's great to see some young people here. I think we have some students from Bakersfield College. If you're a renegade, would you raise your hand? I think several of you are students here. Welcome. And then, not that kind of renegade, council member. And then, Road Runners, I think we have some students here from CSUB. Thank you for being here. And then, I know we have a former Road Runner right here who actually, Mr. John Nilon, thank you for representing us on the California University System on the Board, the first one from Bakersfield. Welcome to all of you. At this time, Dr. Danielle Wright from Freedom Worship Center will offer the invocation. But before Dr. Danielle begins, I'm going to ask you to join me in a moment of silence in memory of the victims of the Las Vegas tragedy. And we'll remember those who have lost their lives with local ties, Jack Beaton, Bailey Schweitzer, Victor Link, Kelsey Meadows of Taft, and Melissa Ramirez, and then those also injured. We had about 10 people at least from Kern County, and one especially remembered, Bakersfield Police Department Officer Aaron Munhenke, and just remember him. But before we get to that point, we will have, following the invocation, even Ethan, Mr. Ethan Cavillo, who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ethan is a junior at Bakersfield High School. He's on the BHS JV soccer team, active with Safe Schools ambassadors, on the debate team, Interact Club. And one of these days, Ms. Jenny, he might be taking your place. He wants to attend law school. So, welcome for all of that. And at this point, Dr. Danielle, we were going to ask all of you to stand up. Let's have that moment of silence, and then I will give a signal for Dr. Danielle to come. So, a moment of silence for those who have been impacted by the Las Vegas tragedy.
As our heads are bowed, we just, it's truly an honor that we have life in breath, and so we want to thank God for that today. Lord, today we recall your faithfulness. We thank you that you walk with us every day, that you are with us in every moment. Thank you that your promises are true, and your goodness never fails us. In this moment, we come to you, and we lay our lives before you. We worship you, and we adore you with every fiber of our being. May everything within us cry, "Holy is the Lord God Almighty, who was and is and is to come." And so, today we join, and we just declare, Father, that you are the God of Bakersfield. Lord, in the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, and since you have established these very authorities to promote peace and order and justice, therefore, we pray for our mayor, Karen Go, every city official, and every particular assembled council member that is here today. And we're asking God that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of the people of the City of Bakersfield, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even where there is an honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. We pray for the agenda that is set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in our beloved City of Bakersfield. And most high God, let Bakersfield be a city set upon a hill that cannot be hid, and that your glory would be what we follow, your voice be what we hear, and prayer be how we seek. And let us always remember that it is in you, in God, that we must trust. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Ethan.
Please join me in saluting our flag. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Dr. Danielle, thank you so much for your service. I know you've been traveling to many countries around the world and seeking the welfare of people. And then, Ethan, thank you again for serving at BHS, and we look forward to you one day becoming a lawyer. Thank you very much. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones, and in keeping with council's policy, council members aren't allowed to send or receive electronic communications during the meeting. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but it is not allowed at other times of the meeting. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber. We thank you so much for your cooperation. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first item?
Public Statements.
At this time, we'll receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statements, please give those to the clerk, and she'll give those to the council. We'd ask you to avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, but due to the public notice requirements of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. However, the council can refer your matter to committee or request staff to follow up and contact you. If you are here on hearing items, 10A, B, or C, now is not the time to speak. You will be given an opportunity when those items are called later in the meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the first public speaker?
Michael Turnipseed, regarding city finances.
Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Michael Turnipseed, representing the Kern County Tax Payers Association. I want to talk to you a little bit about city finances. There was an article in the paper today. I received information and presentations that you've seen in the past. I think, all I'll say is this, last year, we worked with 15 school districts on financial issues and school bonds, and some of them were pretty public. And we helped people. We helped the districts attain what they wanted to do, but maybe in new and creative ways. But we were involved in the conversation. We were able to share our information, and the districts welcomed our input. And because we had input, we were able to support what they wanted to accomplish. So, I'm here today to offer our help and our input to help you address your problems. We have some pretty smart people on our board, who are in a lot of different positions with finance and money, and so I just would like to extend that offer, that we can have open discussions about your needs and goals and what you're trying to accomplish. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Next speaker, please. Madam Clerk.
Teri Maxwell, regarding item 8Z, 24th Street Sound Wall Project.
My name is Teri Maxwell. I'm at 2420 Pine Street, which is right adjacent to where the sound walls are going to be put in. I'm kind of wondering how you can be building these sound walls at this point. Has anybody seen the final plans for 24th Street? Has there been a time for public comment on those plans? Have they been posted at all? Do you know why it took a year and a half to go from 65% completion to 95% completion, but it went from 65 to 95 in 30 days? These are questions that I think that the council should be asking and getting answers to before that you move forward. I've given each of you a letter that I wrote to the Bakersfield Californian as community voices, and I'd like to read just one part of that. Let me describe just one possible scenario. A driver approaching 24th Street on Pine intending to head west, as that's the only direction they would be able to head in the future. As this car gets close to the corner, the corner resident on the west side of Pine, heading home, makes a turn off 24th Street and is not able to pull into their driveway due to the car approaching from the north. Another driver who does not see all this happening because of the sound walls turns into Pine Street off 24th. Now, what's the new speed limit going to be? 45, 50, 55 miles an hour? I mean, they're already doing 60 miles an hour right now. The resident gets rear-ended, the car traveling north on Pine gets hit head-on. There are 10 other equal unsafe scenarios that we could talk about. Now, later tonight, you're going to be talking about safety issues. Right now, you have a huge safety issue because of the location of those sound walls. When I was on the diast, I expressed concern over the plans that they were generating, and I discussed this with Mr. Fidler recently, and he told me, well, there would be a 25-foot space between where those sound walls end and the street starts. Now, if traffic is going that fast, do you really think 25 feet with a 12-foot wall, that's what, almost as high as this building, the ceiling of this room? With a 12-foot wall, you think there's going to be enough space for people to really pull into these very narrow streets safely? I think you've got a big issue here. And what's your rush? Why are you deciding that tonight? You're not going to be really building this for a while. There's nobody complaining at this point about the sound. I think people are complaining about what it's going to look like when it's done, as Mr. Gonzalez knows. So, I would say, slow down. And I'd hope that somebody takes this off the consent agenda and discusses it, and at least puts this off until you can get someone to tell you exactly what those plans are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Workshops, item A, Fiscal Outlook Update.
Thank you. Mr. Tandy.
Honorable Mayor and members of City Council, I'm going to start this with a brief summary and overview, and then Chris Huat will be doing the lion's share of the technical presentation. Members of City Council have requested a presentation which includes long-term fiscal forecasts. The request from council is both timely and prudent, because for the first time in the last 25 years, that forecast is not positive. Yes, there have been periods of state capture, a major recession, and periodic disruptions to the oil economy, which caused the city to cut back and reduce employment and defer cost of living increases. Underlying those occasions, however, was the probability of eventually returning to positive sales tax growth, along with the city operation, which routinely holds costs down and operates on the far edge of conservatism. So, what has changed? The retail business model has been and is going to continue to undergo an unprecedented alteration in character. The city receives 1% of the 7.25% of sales tax and a lesser amount for certain sales that occur within the county. With the rise of internet shopping, next-day delivery, and a decline in the big-box retail era, the city does not see the same benefit in sales tax collections. The former long-term 6% or so growth in receipts, which we had depended upon for many years, is not likely to reoccur. Two, there have been erosion in the city's tax base, unemployment in the oil industry, State Farm and Dryers, among others. The resurgence of the oil industry will eventually occur, but when and to what extent is not known. Three, the City of Bakersfield has been a leader in efforts to control pension and retiree healthcare costs. We sponsored a referendum to lower pension benefits, which passed. Even lower benefit levels were eventually passed. Retiree healthcare benefits were cut off completely for all hired after 2006, and we've been one of the very few jurisdictions in the state to actually fund our long-term actuarial liability. Despite these efforts, CalPERS is increasing our costs at around $5 million a year. That amount exceeds the growth in all other general fund revenue sources combined. Other options, such as leaving CalPERS or pre-funding the city's unfunded liabilities, are cost prohibitive at this time. Expectations in Bakersfield are that service delivery will be timely and efficient. To assure that, an adequate workforce is essential. Employees will look for other opportunities, and recruitment will become increasingly difficult if cost of living adjustments continue to be deferred. Staff has an obligation to advise the City Council of long-term financial trends so that policy alternatives can be considered. This item appears on your agenda tonight for that purpose. And now, Chris Huat will present some technical details.
Just waiting here for the screen to come up. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Chris Huat, City Manager's Office. As Mr. Tandy mentioned, I am here to provide some detail to the comments that were just mentioned. You should have a copy of this presentation in front of you. Again, the City Council has requested that staff provide a long-term fiscal outlook. We are including tonight for you, and I'll go into some detail in just a moment, a five-year forecast of general fund revenues and expenses, as well as some challenges that we're experiencing, some opportunities, and a potential discussion of some next steps. First, I want to talk a little bit about the factors that are affecting the outlook that I'm going to show you in just a moment. The growth of our major general fund revenue sources are lagging our expenditures. There are a myriad of different reasons for that, some that we can point to in the immediate is the fact, and we've known this for several years now, there's been a decline in the oil sector, and that does not seem to be rebounding in the foreseeable future. Countywide, you've seen about a loss of about 4,000 jobs in that sector alone. You've seen activity out in the oil field, which then translates into revenue in the city, not come back in any sort of measurable way since the downturn. As Mr. Tandy mentioned, you have the trending to online retail and such that's impacting local sales tax revenue, and that's the way the sales tax is collected and remitted for online sales. So, any online sales that are done go through a different route, and we see only a smaller percentage of those revenues. We've seen some significant larger employers within the community announce large layoffs in one case, and in another case, a total vacation of a regional office, which is going to have further impacts on the community moving forward. On the other side of the coin, we've seen some additional increases, as we've talked about over time, in CalPERS, and again, I'll get into some details here in just a moment on that. Healthcare, as well as utilities, both electricity and water, those rate increases also have an impact on the city, much like they do on businesses and individuals. The city continues to grow. We've seen some substantial growth since the recession. Again, we'll get into that in just a moment. We do not believe we can continue to forego additional staff in key areas without substantial impacts to the community in as far as service levels and response times. The council continues to prioritize the maintaining and enhancing of basic public service, everything from fire to police, code enforcement, park facilities, and streets. There's been an additional emphasis placed upon enhancing quality-of-life programs and services, so anything from parks and recreation activities, additional lighting projects, beautification, economic development through proactive retention and attraction of businesses, those are things that are of interest to the council that, at this point, staff has challenged to allocate the resources towards because of some of the difficulties that we're facing that I'll be covering. Another factor that we've talked about is that the employees throughout the organization have not had any wage adjustments since 2000 or '14, and that just depends on the group that I'm talking about, and we don't feel like that's sustainable moving forward for the reasons that Mr. Tandy mentioned. Since the recession, we've also seen some state activity and actions that have reduced resources that are available to the city to address a lot of these priorities and goals of the council. That includes the end of redevelopment, which was a significant impact on our ability to address some of the economic beautification and lighting activities. SB 89, if you recall back in 2011, that was a change at the state level that shifted about $1 million or so annually from the city's general fund to the state. We have not seen any sort of replacement funding for that. We're all aware of Proposition 47 and AB 109, and the constraint in what those two pieces of state legislation have done, and the impacts that they've had on our local law enforcement in regards to resources. What we did is we went back, and we wanted to give you a snapshot of where we were in 2008 and where we are today. And there's some different categories here, and I'll walk you through each, just to kind of give you an idea of what we're communicating to you. We've seen a 15% increase in population since 2008. In that same time, the city has grown in area and square miles by 11%. We've seen a reduction in positions over that time. We're 5% below where we were at the point in time in 2008 as far as full-time positions. CalPERS rates have increased 53% since 2008. Electricity in the general fund has increased 32%. When we look at how those general fund dollars are spent per capita, we look at it across three different areas, non-safety, police, and fire. The non-safety per capita spending has decreased by 11%, so that includes anything that's not fire or police. Obviously, that's parks and streets administration. Police per capita spending is up slightly at 7%, and fire per capita is down just under or just over 1%. During that same period of time, it's obviously been a priority of the council, top priority is public safety. The number of sworn officers in the complement has increased, currently the largest sworn complement in the city's history. The police budget correspondingly during this period of time has increased 24%. The sworn complement in the fire department has decreased by approximately 3%, and that fire budget's up 14%. When we look back to 2008 to today, we see that there's been an annual increase in the CPI of 13%, and I think the next two items here on my chart will tell the story a little bit better. We've seen a 6% increase when we compare the two years in general fund revenue. Correspondingly, we've seen a 13% increase in the general fund operating budget, actual dollars spent out of the general fund. So, to that five-year outlook for the general fund, we've made some assumptions based upon where staff believes that we need to move towards to get back to some of the service levels that we talked about earlier. This assumption here takes into consideration many different things, both on the revenue and on the expenditure side. On the revenue side, we are looking at modest increases below some of the numbers that Mr. Tandy mentioned earlier, so below what had been our historical projections for sales tax, property tax, and other general fund revenue. We also assume a fund balance that carries forward for vacant positions and such. On the expenditure side, we're assuming that we need to add staff in certain areas to the tune of about 13 positions a year, or about 1%. It's also factored in, a modest 1.5% cost of living adjustment over this time period. We also look at our PERS medical cost, workers' compensation cost, and all other expenses, and those have gone up and will continue or projected to go up accordingly. So, this takes into consideration what we know now as it relates to future-year PERS cost, as well as estimate for medical cost, and again, workers' compensation. I mentioned PERS. I want to take a look at our projected employer rates and those dollar amounts out to fiscal year '25. Current year, we're projected to pay $42.1 million in employer CalPERS rates. With the information that we're made aware of today and the information that's provided by CalPERS, we run the numbers out for a period of fiscal years, looking out to fiscal year '25, and this is assuming that certain return on investments are made and that all other variables within that CalPERS calculations stay the same, we're looking at about a 67% increase, up to about $71 million in fiscal year '25. So, that is driving part of the shortfall that I showed you on the last slide. So, what has the city done over the last several years to control expenditures? Well, as we mentioned earlier, the city has historically taken a very conservative approach, both from a budgeting standpoint, from a staffing standpoint. If you recall, there was a study done in 2013 by the Washington Examiner. That study looked at 107 cities with a population of greater than 200,000. When they looked at several different metrics, but one that they ranked the cities on was the leanness, so to speak, of the governments. Out of 107 cities, Bakersfield is ranked 107th, had the leanest government-for-residents-per-employer ratio. We've run that same ratio, obviously, in the current year since that time, and it should be no surprise that that gap has widened since the study was published. Dating back a few fiscal years, we've also made some pretty significant cuts to the city's general fund to align our expenses with revenues. Going back to 1415, staff was prepared to bring a package of adjustments to the council at that time, but at that time, the state reimbursed the city for some prior-year unfunded liabilities, or unfunded mandates, excuse me, to the tune of $2 million. If the city was not in a position, the city not received that reimbursement, other cuts were imminent. In 2015, '16, I believe there was two rounds of adjustments or cuts to the general fund that totaled $10.4 million. At that point in time, we deferred a COLA adjustment for employees. There was a significant amount of new equipment that was cut, among many other areas that I'll go into in just a minute. '16, '17, again, another $4.5 million of reductions were made to the general fund that included eliminating 13 full-time positions. Moving into the current fiscal year, staff was directed and the budget was adopted with no significant increases in the general fund, with the exception of cost increases such as CalPERS and healthcare that were not discretionary in nature. We've also taken some one-time actions in an effort to buy some time for the economy to recover. We eliminated and deferred capital projects, shifting those one-time funds to the operating budget. We've reduced the city's compensated absences reserve in the general fund, and we, at one point in time, deferred a retiree healthcare trust payment. All these, again, are one-time in nature. We don't anticipate the ability to do any of these in the future to deal with what it faces us now. Again, over the last several years, you've seen an increase in some times to, whether it's molons in parks or streetscape or other non-essential emergency services. Again, we've reduced positions. We've implemented what's called a non-essential travel ban, so if it's not mandatory for a position, a certification, that sort of thing, we're not traveling at this point in time. We've reduced over time temporary employees. Over time, there's a tuition reimbursement program that the city offers its employees that has been essentially cut off to new enrollees, and the council contingency, which is always of interest to your council, has had to be reduced over the last several years. We've also gone through proactive measures to make the organization more efficient and cut costs where possible. As you all are very aware, we've implemented the IACP recommendation several As you all are very aware, we've implemented the IACP recommendation several years ago, which essentially reallocated available resources at that time to improve services, to make our police department more efficient and addressing the needs of the community. Water conservation measures have been and will continue to be a priority and a focus. We've implemented, we received a grant and implemented a system to essentially outfit all of our city parks with a watering system that makes watering more efficient, saving the city and the organization money over time. We've also gone through and in this building and in other buildings and facilities throughout the city, looked at energy efficiency improvements, including LED lighting, and we will continue to pursue that. So what options exist moving forward? Of course, there are, there is the ability to reduce our expenditures further. There is a potential to increase or enhance revenues, or there's a potential for a combination of both. So I first want to cover generally where we, where our staff is looking at if there was needing to be further expenditure reductions. First look to potentially in all position hiring fees and then possibly a staffing reduction. Personnel costs make up 81% of the city's general fund expenditures. Out of that, public safety in totality makes up 62% of the total general fund expenditures. Saying is that the most impactful means to reduce ongoing general fund spending and to reduce or eliminate any sort of deficit that may be there in the future would be to first look at reducing personnel costs. Those will have a direct impact on reducing levels of service, response times to non-urgent matters, and we would anticipate potential retention and morale issues among the employees. Another item would be looking at operations and facilities, closures of, potentially of fire stations. Again, reducing firefighter position in and of positions, excuse me, in and of themselves does not result in budget savings without closures of a station. Other potential savings include taking a look at our recreational facilities and programs and reducing where necessary and then increasing, again, the time between certain non-essential activities, which could include lawn mowing, preventative street maintenance. It would essentially be an evaluation that we would do with our department, which goes to my next bullet point here, which that if these expenditure reductions were necessary based upon the data that we have before us today, we would bring that as a package to you based upon consultation with our departments. I want to talk real briefly about general fund revenue, and as a refresher, we cover this during the budget presentations each year. The lion's share of the general fund revenues come from two sources: property tax and sales tax. It's about 70% of the general fund revenue. The remainder comes from a variety of different sources which are listed there, but again, the majority is property tax and sales tax. What we did is we went back and took a look at the top 10 cities in California by population, comparing general fund spending per capita to give you just an idea of what the environment exists out there throughout the state. There's probably not any surprises on this list, so to speak, but the general fund capita spending in Bakersfield is about $511 as of last year. We put these in descending order, so you see, again, in San Francisco tops the list, over 5,000. Little note, they're both a city and a county, so it's a little of a unique situation, but Los Angeles at $1,300 and then down from there. The next closest on the list is Fresno at $560 in general fund spending per capita. So again, I talked about the two major general fund revenue sources, and I want to talk a little bit about the mechanics of those and where that money comes from and where it goes. The sales tax rate in Bakersfield, when you make a purchase, is seven and a quarter percent. That's the state base or the state minimum rate. When you look at the average sales tax rate in the top 20 cities, which I'll get to in just a moment, that averages about eight and a half percent, just to give you some perspective. So $100 purchase in the city of Bakersfield, when you go out to your big box retailer or your local business here, a small business, purchase $100 worth of taxable goods, about $6 goes to the state. Some of that comes back to the county and other local jurisdictions for certain services, but it goes to the state first. About a quarter of that goes to county transportation and dollars kept local for city services. So when we talk about where we pay for police, fire, streets, parks, a portion of that comes from the $1 out of the $100 purchase in the city of Bakersfield. As far as property tax revenue is concerned, if you recall, property tax is governed by the state through Prop 13. Prop 13 has been around for many, many years, since 1978, I believe. So when we look at a dollar worth of property tax paid, when you write your check for your property tax bill each year, this is approximate, this is average, there are nuances throughout the city as far as how this is allocated, but this gives you a snapshot and average. Schools K through 12, Community College District receives over 60% of that dollar. The county, for their general fund operations and fire services, Fire Fund receives approximately 25%. Again, give or take in certain areas. The city, on average, receives 9% and then special districts, an example would be North of the River Recreation and Parks District, receives about 6%. Again, these are averages. So for every dollar paid in property tax, the city receives approximately nine cents. So how does that translate to a common purchase? Well, we look at sales tax for a new car for $20,000. You can see the breakdown here. City would get about $200, give or take. For a $300,000 home, again, Proposition 13 limits it to 1% of that assessed valuation, about $3,000. You look at those percentages I provided previously, the city gets about $270 annually. So the second point here in this section was revenue enhancements or discussion of such. So outside of property tax, again, Prop 13, the cities have the authority to impose a broad range of taxes. However, just some caveats, and while these may not all be necessarily taxes, I wanted to point these out. The city cannot raise its fees beyond the cost of providing that service. You can't arbitrarily, for example, add 25% to the existing park rental fee just because. It would have to be a correlation to actually providing that service through staff time, and there's an analysis that's done for every one of our fees. So again, there's no ability or flexibility there. The city cannot use what are called enterprise funds for general fund expenditures. So for example, the water rates that are charged to users in the domestic water system cannot be utilized for anything other than operating that system. They cannot, in my example, be used to say, to pay for additional staff in the police department to go patrol. Finally, Proposition 218, again, another state proposition, requires voter approval for all local tax increases. So when you look at the types of voter-approved tax, additional taxes that are approved throughout the state of California, the most common type is an add-on sales tax. Essentially, that's a tax that's added on above and beyond the state base rate that I mentioned with, in areas where a city voters have approved, that revenue comes directly back to the local jurisdiction for a variety of different types of activities in the general fund. There's essentially two types of measures, and each carries a voter threshold. So if it's considered undesignated, it's not earmarked for a certain use, it requires a simple majority of the voter's approval. It's designated or a special tax, it requires two-thirds voter approval. As of last count, there's approximately 176 cities in the state of California that have an additional sales tax levied in their community. I mentioned that I was going to list the top 20 cities in the state of California. This is the top 20 cities by population, but the way I have it listed here is by what the total combined sales tax rate is in those communities. You start at the top. If you're down in Long Beach and you make a taxable purchase, paying 10 and a quarter percent. Move down the list, you can see it varies by each jurisdiction for the most part, and then Bakersfield, again, as I mentioned, is the only city in the top 20 at the state minimum, or seven and a quarter, quarter percent. So an add-on sales tax, in this case, would be applicable to all taxable sales within the city limits. We've done some preliminary revenue estimates depending on the amount of that sales tax. It would range anywhere between, on the low end, we believe about $16 million to about $50 million annually. Again, the caveat to that local add-on sales tax is all of that stays local for local control. It would not be subject to state takes, as we've seen in other areas. It would potentially be used to support and enhance some of those general fund programs and services that I spoke about earlier, including trying to address some of those additional goals and priorities of the council that staff is not been able to address, again, such as some of those beautification, economic development efforts. Would assist in being able to continue to provide the level of services that the residents have come to expect and, to a certain extent, would likely alleviate the need to further reduce staffing programs and services. So I think the question that comes about is what do the residents and the prospective voters think about this topic, potentially from a revenue enhancement standpoint? What we've found is that many cities that are considering or have considered in the past a sales tax measure or any revenue enhancement measure, for that matter, will poll prospective voters. That helps both the council and the staff understand opinions, perceptions, priorities. This type of exercise would be statistically valid. It generally has about a six-week window to do. It would, again, the sample size, the type, the length, whether or not they do focus groups or just a statistically valid questionnaire would determine the cost. And this does not lock the city into placing a ballot, a measure on the ballot. It's for informational purposes only. So what I put together is a very hypothetical timeline, and I bolded a date there, and I'll get to that in just a moment. There's a reason why I did that. If we were to move forward, the first step would be to go through a process to evaluate consultants potentially, to go out and talk to and receive information from prospective voters about, again, their perceptions and thoughts associated with revenue enhancement. This could be done as early as November 15th, awarding an agreement if we were to move forward. From that point in time, we would anticipate about a two-month, just to get everything set up, to do the actual six weeks, six weeks' worth of focus groups and surveys, about two months to do that, and then come back in March approximately of 2018 and review those with you and determine next steps. And again, I bold that point because I view that, we view that as a go one way or the other at that point in time, once you have that information. If it were to move forward, then the formal documents would have to be adopted and submitted to the county election office sometime on June of 2018, and of course, we're looking at an election next November. So at this point, staff is looking to issue a request for proposals for a consultant to look at voter surveys and get that information back to you. This agreement, though, would come back to you for council consideration as soon as November 15th. And then, again, I wanted to reiterate at this point in time that that does not commit the city to place any measure on the ballot. It would, again, be for informational purposes only. And so with that, I will turn it back over to the council for questions, unless Mr. Tandy has any further statement.
Happy to respond to questions.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Yeah, I was the one that asked for the five-year plan and, or five-year look, and I appreciate what you've done. It gives us a clear look that we have a decision to make, and I think it's right to ask the residents what they prefer. Do they prefer, we can continue to cut services or we can, you know, talk about revenue enhancement, which would be a sales tax. So look forward to some feedback and what the community is looking forward to. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Chris. I have a few questions, and this actually relates to some of the items that are on the agenda later as well, so I'm not sure if there's a nuance to discussing those. Maybe Ms. Gennaro just told me to shut up if I need to shut up, but I think in the context of this conversation, they're very important to talk about now. The first one, and I think the first one's an obvious one, and I think I shared where I was coming from in my vote, my dissenting vote at our last meeting with respect to the city's continued ineffective ban on marijuana in Bakersfield. As I was thinking about it today, you know, and I asked this question at that last meeting, you know, since we've had a ban in 2013, how many, well, I asked the question, how effective has it been? And I obviously, based on, gosh, even driving from my home to this council meeting can tell you it obviously, quite obviously, has not worked. I have one right across the street from my home, and I have five within one and a half blocks of my house. So, you know, in the process of banning a particular industry, we've been very, very ineffective in actually regulating it and getting anything for it. I mean, I don't know if there's a, if there's a number to affix to this, but I'd be willing to bet that since our ban in 2013, we have, we've collected less than $1 from this particular industry that operates within city limits and seems to do rather well within city limits. And in that same time, we have spent more than $1 on enforcement in either response to incidents at particular dispensaries or in our legal efforts to actually shut down particular dispensaries. It does not make sense to me why, in the same conversation, where we can talk about a sales tax increase, and we can actually suggest we're going to go to the voters and ask them for more money, that we could not possibly entertain an alternative strategy on what appears to be an emerging industry in the city and we really have no control over it. And I think it, I think we're being very foolish in not reconsidering our approach to these dispensaries in the city. I think we've exacerbated a problem. We have a black market that continues to grow, and that frustrates me. So I think that's an option we didn't talk about just now. In addition to that, and this relates to some other items on the agenda this evening, I'm not convinced that what I've heard thus far from staff is really the whole picture with respect to our options. I think it's very easy to conclude that you need more revenue. It's very easy to go to a voter and ask him for more money, and it's very easy to charge someone more money at a store. We have two, we have two items on the agenda this evening, and I'll ask more specifically about them when they come up, that according to the administrative reports are locally funded. I don't know what that means, but one is $1.9 million and the other is $1.3 million, well, $1.4 million rounded up. I'd be curious to know where that money's coming from. And those two particular bids are actually specific to the Thomas Rhodes Improvement Project. In the same breath, as we've had this discussion about decreases in revenues and increases in expenses, we have, for the last few years, been spending a lot of local revenue for these projects. I have not understood and still do not understand why, as a part of our options, if things are as bad as they are, and mind you, two years ago, it didn't seem like that was the case, so a lot of this is newer information, it seems to me at least, then all options should be on the table, and perhaps there's money in a utility surcharge or elsewhere that should be freed up to provide, either maintain or enhance existing city services. And perhaps pausing capital improvement projects is an appropriate step right now. I don't understand why that's not an option that's been presented this evening. I also really don't, you know, this, the presentation to me seems to really suggest we politicize an issue, and I don't like the idea of government conducting polls to determine whether or not an idea it has is popular. We either decide that there's an issue and this is what the city believes is the solution or we don't. I think it would be rather cowardly to base any actions this body takes based on what we think political backlash would be. So I'm not in favor of conducting a poll. I'm not in favor of going to voters to ask them whether or not they think a sales tax is appropriate. is appropriate because I don't think it is. So I would actually, I would move that we table this discussion until later time that this council decides, I guess by a majority vote, that they want to have this discussion. And in the meantime, I think we should be exploring more options. I'm not satisfied that we're doing that now and until then, I can't support moving forward on the recommendations staff has made.
Was that a motion then to table the discussion? You have a motion? Please cast your, no. Madam Attorney?
Mayor, that'll be the first motion on the table and so if you could see if any other council members have questions, but again, the motion to table just as a reminder does take priority.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Madam Mayor, do you prefer we vote on that motion before we have additional discussion on Chris's presentation?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Well, my perspective on this is that we need to recognize we have a long-term problem with our economy here. The reason these numbers are like they are is because our economy has changed. I don't know when oil will come back. We have a state that is very hostile towards our specific industry and would probably like it to disappear if it could and will pass additional regulations to suppress that industry. So it's going to be a battle and we can't, we can't program in a recovery. We just don't have any evidence that'll happen, even if it did, that our state will allow it. We have a state that's hostile in its government to receiving water here. If, with our new Sigma program, we don't know if that could take a couple of hundred thousand acres out of production because we're not allowed to have one drop of overdraft. If the canal mother, the whole industry is based on that canal water coming down. You take whatever, a million acre feet away, our industry collapses. So we have some major challenges to our two major industries. Some of it you see up here. If anyone thinks there'll be less sales on the internet next year, I think they ought to think again. There's not one major company that is moving to the internet. The sales tax decline, which Chris didn't go into, but every year goes down by $3 million, we're forecasting they won't go down anymore. I don't know how that's possible when every single major retailer in the country is trying to shift all of their growth to the internet. The state captures supposedly those dollars. What we learned from our finance director is instead of returning them to where they were generated, which generally in cities and shopping centers, they return them to the state who passes it back out on headcount. Well, we generate them about 60-40 in the city versus county. They return the money 40-60. That's about a $15 million flip in itself of decreased revenue. So things are changing, we have to change with them and we have to recognize our biggest challenge is economic growth and we're going to have to decide how are we going to change and what kind of a city do we want because we have to kind of rethink our entire economy, attract new businesses, mainly attract new businesses, grow businesses, attract new businesses. I could say it 10 times because things change in life and in the business community. When we look at, you know, what are we going to have to do to try to operate? We need to operate government more efficiently and we have to look within ourselves, obviously, for this. Mr. Tandy will have to put a budget together before we would even know if we had a sales tax increase. So that process is going to be painful next year to go through and it's going to be gone through anyway because that budget's due on June 1st, not the following November. But, so we're going to have to go through that process of cutting to the bone anyway. But we better look at what kind of, in this process, and I really value the feedback from the public. I love the transparency you're providing tonight. I think it's wonderful. I like Mr. Turnipsey's volunteering ideas and assistance. I would like that from all other organizations, this community that can help. But we have to define some goals and what kind of a city we want to be in the future. And we will probably need some funds to do that. It's very, you know, we can't provide any incentives to bring any companies here. We can't do anything for economic development. As you said, we don't even have an economic development department anymore. We can't do anything because we can't, you know, for some things we're under control like the calipers, we can barely pay our bills. So I think at some point, we're going to need some money for investing in a better community. And if after we've exhausted all the cuts we can make and looked at ourselves, if we need additional funds to improve this city and make it grow, because you either grow or you shrink, there's no such thing as staying. You're either a winner or a loser and you keep shrinking and everybody suffers. I kind of, I want to be a winner and I like to see things grow. So I want us to go through this process and really look hard at what kind of a city do we want? What do the people out there want? And I value the input in the process. I don't know what we should do yet. That's what our community has to tell us is what city do you want and what do you want us to do? So I'm very much in favor of moving forward to at least hire some consultants and find out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to piggyback off of what Councilmember Freeman just mentioned about asking what our constituents want, I hear from my constituents every day what they want. They want good roads, they want a fast response time, they want clean parks, they want the graffiti removed off of public spaces fairly quickly. I can keep going. They want an effective code enforcement. When they call the fire department, they want a response right away. You know, it's very clear that the residents of Bakersfield have high expectations for our city services and they want a higher quality of life. Now the question is, how do we, how do we get there and how do we maintain that? What surprised me was hearing the Washington Examiner study. So just to clarify, over, you know, a study in 2013 by the Washington Examiner showed that for cities over the population of 200,000 residents, 107 cities, we ranked 107?
Councilmember Gonzalez, that's correct as far as the number of residents per employee, correct.
In terms of the leanest government for residents per employee ratio. That's amazing. So our city staff is asked to do a tremendous amount with very few resources.
And I would note that that was prior to some additional staffing cuts in the general fund that we went through, yes.
And you also mentioned in your presentation that the city has eliminated or deferred capital projects. Can you illustrate what those projects are?
That's a great question. At one point in time, I remembered everyone that we eliminated. I do know over a period of time, we analyzed quite a few different projects throughout the city. I'm drawing a blank on specific projects and, but I know there were some lighting projects and street lighting projects and some various road improvement projects that were deferred as well as some projects, I believe at some fire facilities, if I'm not mistaken as well.
Fire station rehabilitation, preventative maintenance, major preventative maintenance on elevator systems, roofing repairs, mostly general fund buildings and grounds kinds of issues.
And Councilmember Rivera brought up a point that I hear often of, you know, while we continue to pursue roads projects, we're still faced with these fiscal crises. And so how do we square those two? I think for the benefit of the public, if you'd like to respond, Mr. Tandy or Mr. Huat?
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. I'd love to. First of all, the core of the TRIP money started out with a federal earmark of $630 million brought here by Congressman Thomas. The city council over time committed three revenue sources, which are by law only allowed to be used for road and street purposes to the TRIP program. The first is transportation development fees. Transportation development fees can only be used to pay for a set grid of arterial streets, which were initiated as a part of the planning process to justify the TDF. They can be not used for general fund, they can't be used for local maintenance, they can only be used for capital outlays on this specific grid of street system. Gas tax funds are by law only allowed to be used for streets and roads. They can be used either for maintenance activities or for capital projects. When it appeared that the transportation development fees would not be generating enough revenue for the full financing of the TRIP program, it happened coincidental to that, that our franchises with two major utilities expired after 50 years of life. The city council adopted undercover of dedicating the money to the road system, a commitment to have those fees put in place, which were then approved by the Public Utilities Commission, and by council action, they are dedicated to road and street projects. None of those revenues can be used to hire police officers to pay purse costs on general fund employees, they are dedicated to street employees. Some of them can in fact be put into maintenance rather than capital, but then you lose your $630 million potentially in federal earmark. By the way, I will add that the $630 million has become $1.4 billion over the last 11 years because we've used the money to leverage and prioritize and obtain access to federal estate grants, also all dedicated exclusively to roadway purposes. So to abandon it, I guess I'd have to ask you if you want mark chips in your ward for the next 20 years.
No, thank you.
But it would be fiscally irresponsible to abandon the program and the monies are used to generate more monies for the same purpose.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next question. In your presentation, you pointed out 20 cities with sales tax rates and you listed Bakersfield at 7.25%. I wonder if staff has done analysis on comparing our sales tax with other cities within Kern County?
That's a good question. I'm going off the top of my head, but I believe as of the last election, four other cities in Kern County have an add-on sales tax and I don't remember, I remember looking at, I don't remember the exact cities, but I do know that four, I believe, other cities in Kern County have an additional sales tax above and beyond, excuse me, the state minimum. So, and again, I'm trying to go off memory. I think it's anywhere between a half percent and a full 1%.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Colleagues, Councilmember Weir's light is not working, so it's going to look like we're out of order, but I know exactly what his point is. Councilmember, we are next.
You know, I've been on the council a while and we've been on a long trip to kind of end up where we are right now. Journey that started back in May of 1999 when Calpers thought they had the magic goose that laid golden eggs and went around telling the legislature in communities all up and down the state that we can basically increase pension costs by 50% and will never cost employers a dime. Fiduciarily irresponsible, absolutely irresponsible. Anybody that's been in an economics class for at least one class will know, the economy is like a ripple in the water. It has ups, it has downs, it's never going to be as good as you think it is and it can always be worse. So Calpers started putting together what eventually became SB 400, became effective when Gray Davis signed it, came effective in 2000. And now cities up and down the state, not just Bakersfield, cities up and down this state are struggling with the ramifications of that action. Now, I don't believe we have anybody from the state here tonight that's going to help us with this problem and I doubt we have anybody from here, from Calpers, that's going to help us with this problem. They created this problem, but they're not culpable for it. It's up for us to fix. Can we go back to the slide where you showed our shortfall over, from 2018 to 2023? In those same years, Calpers is, Calpers rates to City of Bakersfield is going up 23 point, excuse me, I'm rolling pitch, $23.7 million over that same time period. $23.7 million, ending up at $71 million eventually in 2025. So you can run a city as lean as you want to, you can be as conservative as you want to, but when other people are making decisions about your money and they're not culpable for those decisions and they leave it up to the local jurisdictions to have to deal with the problems they create, this is how we end up in this situation. I don't know how many other cities up and down the state are going to be in this situation. I know in this, in the presentation tonight, it said there's 176 cities in the state that already have an add-on sales tax. I wonder if we could look at some of those cities and still, and see if they are still having problems with their purse payment. To me, it is unconscionable that we are sitting here tonight, the employees in our, in our city didn't do anything wrong. They have retirements, they're entitled to retirements. I don't think we as a council have done anything wrong. I don't think staff has done anything wrong. And I certainly know the citizens of Bakersfield hasn't done anything wrong. But now we're in a position where we're going to ask them to foot the bill for something that nobody in this, in this city is responsible for. I think that's outlandish and I think it's irresponsible in the state. They have, they have the will to pass gas taxes. They have the will to pass a lot of taxes that make them feel good, but there's no feel good about admitting you made a mistake and coming to the rescue of people that need their help. And don't get me wrong, I understand no matter which way this goes, it's the taxpayer that's on the hook for this. But to force local jurisdictions into the position of having to go to their constituents and ask to foot the bill for financial irresponsibilities of others, no, that doesn't sit well with me. And at this point, yeah, I have no interest in doing this. Now, on a totally different note, I've said this before in public session, I'll say it again tonight. I am not comfortable when we have an item on the agenda as a workshop or a report not listed for action. And so to accept a motion on this, I think is not the right thing to do. And if we're going to proceed with accepting motions on this, then I will excuse myself.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney, can you answer the last question by Mr. Weir as far as moving forward on a motion?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'll try. I mean, the issue really at hand is whether or not the item on the agenda is adequate to provide the reader or the member of the public an understanding of what's being recommended. If you look at your agenda tonight, the item says fiscal outlook update. I would be the first to admit that that is very sparse in terms of giving the public an opportunity to be, to be heard. But Mr. Huat, could you put your recommendation up for me, please? I think you can actually take, have two options. I would suggest in order to have the full council vote on it, perhaps we should just come back at the next, at the next council meeting and we can have a modified version of the presentation and Mr. of the presentation, and Mr. Huat can have the consultant agreement ready to go at that time. That way, all of the members will be here and be able to vote, or one of you can simply make a referral on this during mayor and council comments.
We have a motion that has been presented.
You have a motion to table it, correct? I think, again, Councilmember Weir has stepped away from the dais, so, again, I don't know how he would interpret a motion to table, but, again, we haven't heard members of the public or given them, I think, an opportunity to weigh in on this. So, again, my preference would be that the issue come back at the next, at the next council meeting, so you have, you have seven, seven members that can vote.
So am I hearing that we're not going to vote on the motion that has been presented?
I would like Councilmember Rivera to consider withdrawing his motion to table in light of the comments by Councilmember Weir.
Okay, well, we'll see.
Councilmember Rivera.
Councilmember Rivera has to say. I just, a couple more comments, and then I'm done. I just, I think the, the evidence is clear that we are lean. We're the leanest of the 107 cities. We, $511 per population is the lowest of all the comparable cities, and we have the least amount of sales tax. So we, we collect the least and we spend the least, and, you know, you can only do that for so long. We can have, we can have less and less and less if that's what the community wants, and it's a community decision, in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm confused by a lot of things tonight, especially the comments related to services, because I would, I'd be remiss if I didn't remind folks not, I, gosh, not less than a year ago, this council touted or was very proud of our reduction in response times and in maintaining or facilitating other park improvements. So I guess I fail to see the, the connection our city manager tried to draw, or at least my colleague, Councilmember Gonzalez, tried to draw in, in things being as dire as they are. In addition to that, we heard from our city manager on these three revenue sources, and obviously, you get a far more dramatic representation of the problem from him than you'd get from me. One, I think it's important to note, I never said to stop building projects. I think it's the most financially prudent and responsible thing, though, to have all options on the table in a discussion such as this. I have, for, I think in several, in several meetings advocated that perhaps a pause in projects was appropriate, because anyone who tells you that there's less than a dollar in general fund revenue that could have otherwise been freed up by not moving dirt, buying a house, or doing something related to TRIP is not being honest. I just, I just don't get it. I, I agree with Councilmember Weir. I don't think it's responsible to ask the voters for this, but I also don't understand why he's not on the dais right now. So I don't believe in wasting people's time and coming back, one, staff's time, and, two, my time, and coming back to another council meeting and have this discussion over again, and to have another presentation over again. So I'm not withdrawing my motion.
We still have additional council members who wish to comment. Councilmember Freeman.
No, should push, I'd like to defer and let Mr. Parlier speak, and then I might speak afterwards.
Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Councilmember, I think. You know, my dad used to tell me, don't be in a hurry to make an important decision, and I think we're rushing a little bit tonight. Chris, what's the cost of doing this poll?
Councilmember Parlier, what we've looked at are some other cities of comparable size. For this stage, we've seen anywhere from $50,000 to $70,000. It all comes down to some of the variables that are built in, the sample size, questionnaires over telephone versus focus groups or a combination. There's a range.
Okay. I agree with Mr. Turnip Seed's comments. You know, I think we need to do our due diligence. I think we need to partner with the community members and get their input, members like the chamber, working with those people, and I think we should slow down a little bit. And at this point, I'm in favor with Councilmember Rivera's motion.
Councilmember Freeman, would you like to come back now?
Just, I want to be sure I know where we are with the motions. What, if we, if we have a motion to, is it a motion to table it, which is an indefinite deferment? Is that where, is that the motion?
That's my understanding, Councilmember Freeman. Unless Councilmember Rivera wants to correct me, I have you down as moving that we table the matter until council says to come back.
Okay, my, my preference is to have it brought back. So just personally, I like to see it brought back with a cost that can be discussed that night and voted upon to proceed then, rather than to simply put this off completely. I think, I think it's important, I think it's something the community needs to move forward in exploring, and I just would like to see us move forward with that exploration. So I'm not in favor of just basically tabling it indefinitely.
I know we have another comment. City Attorney, do you have further comment?
No, Mayor, only if Councilmember Sullivan has a comment, then we have the motion.
Okay. Councilmember Sullivan, do you wish to comment?
Well, of course, I'm, I'm interested in what our city attorney suggested, so I think that that would be wise thinking, and so I'm not quite sure how to proceed with that. Isn't, Jenny, would you explain that again? Just wanting it to be reworded, rethought, and to come back next meeting?
Councilmember Sullivan, Councilmember Rivera is not willing to withdraw his motion, so you're going to have a motion to table this, which is going to require the council to go ahead and vote.
And last, Vice Mayor Smith, do you have one more comment before we go? Okay, Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you. Chris, could you put up the timeline again? I believe that you were not requesting that we make any decisions to move forward, as Councilmember Parlier suggested tonight. The idea was, at the next meeting or two meetings, we would make a decision at that point whether or not to go forward with a consultant. You were just going to get a proposal and come back, and then a real decision would be made. We weren't, you weren't requesting a decision tonight, but what Councilmember Rivera is requesting is for us to direct you to not even move forward with getting a request for proposals.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor Smith, that's my understanding. Staff was looking to go out and get an actual cost for this type of activity, and, again, that would be a separate consideration of the council at a future meeting, correct?
Thank you. So it doesn't cost anything for staff to go out and get a proposal, and then for us to actually have something on the agenda that we all could vote on. So I am not in favor of tabling, I am in favor of staff bringing something back later, which is actually not a motion at this time, it's just having something to talk about next time. Thank you.
Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I disagree with the Vice Mayor on this point. I, I think we are talking about something tonight. We're talking about spending potentially $75,000 worth of taxpayer money to a poll, correct?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Parlier, no, tonight, there is no item on your agenda to.
Right, but in the big scheme of things, that's kind of what we're talking about. So I don't know, Councilmember Rivera can speak for himself, and I don't know, maybe this item will come back. But, again, I think there is even potentially community members that are conducting polls right now, and I think we should wait and see what that information garners, then go out and potentially spend our own money. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm back. Again, still confused. If anyone leaves this council chambers thinking that this council's unsure of what it's considering, what it wants to do based on this conversation, then you weren't paying attention. We're obviously weighing the value of a sales tax. The reason I've asked to table the idea is because I don't believe we should have a sales tax increase. It's very clear. That's why I'm tabling the idea. Why have staff go, go do a, go conduct an RFP, request proposals, bring it back to this council to have the same conversation again? The conversation we're having this evening is obviously about revenue increases. Let's stop beating around the bush. So my tabling the motion is because I'm not in favor of a sales tax increase or any other type of revenue increase to the citizens of Bakersfield now or in the future, and I don't want to have the conversation anymore. It's very simple for me.
You have a motion? Please cast your vote.
Motion fails with Councilmember Smith, Gonzalez, Freeman, and Sullivan voting no, and Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Could I get a second motion, please? Perhaps Vice Mayor Smith, could you move staff's recommendation?
I thought there was not going to be a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Huat, thank you, Mr. Tandy. Next item, please.
I mean, let me finish that conversation. I mean, that was, my understanding was that.
I think it would be important, particularly for the public, since you had the, since you had the split vote, to give direction to staff, particularly since you could have the ability to come back tonight under mayor and council comments and make it. I think it would be very clear to direct staff that you want staff to continue down this road and bring it back on, on a follow-up agenda and have another discussion so that the public can participate. Please.
I will move.
Thank you.
That staff proceed to put together an RFP and bring it back to council for council to make a decision on.
Councilmember Sullivan.
All right, I was, I was going down that path. Thank you, Bob. Thank you.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Rivera voting no, Councilmember Weir absent, and Councilmember Parlier abstaining.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under appointments, we have a regular and alternate appointment in Ward 5 to the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee due to the expiration of terms of regular committee member David Taylor and alternate committee member Patrick Fraze. Terms expired November 2016. One application for appointment was received from Matthew Martin.
Councilmember Freeman.
Yes, I believe I would like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Cynthia Pithong as the permanent member and Matthew Martin as the alternate member for KBB.
And would that be Crystal Pithong?
Yes, Crystal.
Yes. And Matthew Martin?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
You have a motion?
Yes.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Is Ms. Pithong or Mr. Martin present in the office in the meeting? You can just raise your hand, we just wanted to acknowledge you, thank you very much, and thank you for your service. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
On the consent calendar, we have items 8A through 8AG for approval. A staff memorandum was received regarding item 8A, transmitting a corrected document.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have requests from Councilmember Rivera to pull off items D, R, and AA. Are there any other items council members would like to pull for separate consideration? Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve items A through AG, excepting D, R, and AA.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Now we have item 8D, Vice Mayor, sorry, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 8D for the audience is the adoption of an ordinance adding certain sections to our municipal code related to commercial cannabis. I don't need to repeat myself, but I think I've made myself clear at the last meeting and just earlier. Our ban doesn't work, I'm not sure why we're digging in, so I can't support this.
Okay. Motion?
I will make a motion to approve item 8D.
You have a motion?
Motion is approved with Councilmember Rivera voting no and Councilmember Parlier
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera, 8R.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question. I noticed this is an amendment to an agreement. Can, can staff tell me what the increase in the design and construction cost is associated with? It seems like it's pretty quick to already see increases on TCP mitigation.
Councilmember Rivera, I can start it, and Mr. Chinello can come up if need be. This is a design-build guaranteed maximum price contract. Typically, it takes place in two major phases. The first phase gets your engineering and design work to the point where you can lock in a contract for a guaranteed maximum price. So the first contract was to get the work to that point, understanding that you had to have a certain amount of engineering and design work done in order for the contractor to lock in a GMP, or guaranteed maximum price. We're at that stage now, and this is Phase 2 contract, under which the contractor locks in and guarantees the top maximum price that he will charge us for the work, irrespective for his costs.
Okay. And so for clarification, that maximum cost, then, would be, it says here, revised not to exceed $21,811,472?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll move approval of this item.
You have a motion? Please cast your vote.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And then one more, 8AA, Councilmember Rivera.
I must, I must not have, did I not write down Z on my list? We voted on that earlier, then?
Yes, we did.
Was it on my list?
No, you only had.
I only saw the three, D, R, and AA.
Oh, I messed up, then. It's on this list. I guess I put it on the wrong one. That's okay. So item 8A is very similar to item Z. I just wanted to better understand what locally funded meant, the $1.9 million in the award contract for. contract for constructing the project.
Councilmember Rivera, actually, they are a bit different. When streets are reconfigured, traditionally, the utility that has facilities within the street wide away pays for the relocation. In this case, the Centennial Corridor cut through residential neighborhoods. Number of sewer pipes have to be realigned, some cut off, and the Sewer Enterprise Fund of the City of Bakersfield is the source for the $1,900,000. Most times, when you'll see on a trip action, a local contribution, it refers to the three dedicated revenue sources, transportation development fees, gas tax, or utility franchise fee surcharge that I referred to earlier.
Okay. So, in this, in this particular case, it's coming from the enterprise fund?
Yes.
Okay. I'll go ahead and move approval of this item, then.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under hearings, we have a public hearing to consider a resolution ordering the removal of the 24th Street crosswalks at Alder and A Streets and Drake and D Streets. One email was received in support of the staff recommendation, and 21 emails and letters were received in opposition to the staff recommendation.
Thank you. You know, I think we've been asked just to take a brief break, so let's come back in five minutes. So, 6:47, five more minutes. Before I open the public hearing, I'll go over the presentation time policy. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement quickly, so that others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff recommendation, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the wall behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and after 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up, and quickly end your statement. So, it's 15 minutes total for all speakers on that side. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk, and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to all who wish to speak. Unless there's approval by the majority of the city council, there's a strict 15-minute time limit for all those in favor or opposition to staff's recommendation. So, please be concise, avoid repeating the remarks of previous speakers. And Madam Clerk, I know you read the first public state hearing item before we broke. Go ahead and do it again, since we had that little break.
Public hearing item 10A, public hearing to consider a resolution ordering the removal of the 24th Street crosswalks at Alder and A Streets and Drake and D Streets.
Thank you. Mr. Fidler.
Honorable Mayor and council members, as indicated by the clerk, this item is public hearing for the removal of two crosswalks. The first crosswalk being on 24th Street at Alder Street to the north and A Street to the south, and the second crosswalk being at Drake Street to the north and D Street to the south. Pursuant to Section 21950.5 of the California Vehicle Code, the city is required to give the public an opportunity to provide comments on the proposed crossing removal. To provide compliance to this section, the city staff has notified the public of the public hearing through two methods, one by posting both crossings with signage, and then two by placing an add in the Bakersfield Californian. On February, or I'm sorry, the original environmental impact report for the 24th Street widening project maintained the existence of the crosswalks at A Street and Alder and D Street, Drake and D Street crosswalks as part of the project. The ER described an A Street Alder crosswalk as a striped crosswalk with a flashing yellow beacon, and the Drake D Street crosswalk as a striped crosswalk only. During the approval of the environmental impact report, the crosswalk at A Street and Alder was eliminated, although approval of the original ER for the project eliminated the Alder and A Street crossing from the proposed project as described in the administrative report. The recirculated environmental impact did not remove the Alder-A Street crosswalk from the project. So, therefore, the project still includes both crossings as part of the project. During the environmental document, this is very early stages of design, we are in preliminary engineering design. As we move forward into final design, reaching up into the 90%, 95%, the consultants for, the design consultants for the project identified safety issues with both crossings. This, I'll first give you an overview of the whole project. As you're fully aware, the city has a capital improvement project to improve 24th Street from just west of 99 all the way to M Street to the east. The area that we're talking about this afternoon, or this evening, is within the area between Oak Street and F Street. This, the part of the project in this area includes widening 24th Street to include additional lane in each direction, both eastbound and westbound, to facilitate the new project. As shown on the slide overhead, you could see the locations of Alder Street, A Street crosswalk, and the Drake and D Street crosswalk. You can also see their proximity to both Oak Street to the west and F Street to the east. It's approximately one mile from Oak Street to F Street. There's 13 city blocks in between the two crossings, or intersections. And there are both, there are signalized intersections at both Oak Street and F Street. This is a picture of the existing crossings on Alder Street and A Street crosswalks. Again, Alder Street to the north, A Street to the south. The top picture, you're looking to the west from the, I'm sorry, looking to the east from Alder Street, looking kind of a southeastwardly. And then, on the right, you're looking southerly. Some of the items that the design consultant has determined to be, create some of the safety issues for the crosswalk at this location is insufficient distance between the merge and the crosswalk. When I discuss a merge, it's where we're taking from a four-lane down to a three-lane facility. When a merge is actually dropping one lane in the, in the westbound direction. The existing beacon and striping does not provide sufficient notice to drivers, and volume of traffic makes it unsafe for pedestrians and drivers alike. The C Street traffic signal accessing 24th Street is, C Street traffic accessing 24th Street is too close to the crosswalk. So, for those of you that aren't familiar with the C Street traffic, is we're providing an access for eastbound traffic to actually do a turn, a U-turn to come back to the west to, so they can access the neighborhood streets to the north. As part of the project, we're placing a raised median, which will restrict, restrict left turn movements to the northerly streets. TYL and International Project Designer, TYL is our design consultant, their project designer refuses to sign the plans with the crosswalk at this location. I have an illustration a little bit further in the presentation. I'll go a little bit more into the merge and the crosswalk issues. This is an exist, the existing photos of Drake Street and D Streets crosswalk. Again, the first, the top photo is looking towards the west. You can see the merge arrows and the merge lane lines that exist there today, and then the crosswalk looking to the south. Impacts to Drake Street, D Street crosswalks. The crosswalk is only striped, no lights or signage. Crosswalk is located at the beginning of the westbound merge. Drivers will be focused on them, on the vehicle merge. A pedestrian could be shielded from the traffic in the middle two lanes. With this project, it will be four lanes within this area, so that's why it's saying it's shielded in, in the two middle lanes. It's adding a full nether lane within the crossing area. The Drake D Street crossing is, crosswalk is only 600 feet from the signalized crosswalk at F Street. This rendering shows the locations of the different movements that are happening within the crosswalk area. If you're moving from east to, to west, east, the right-hand sheet of the, right-hand side of the page indicates F Street. You can see the little signalized intersection up there for westbound, and then, as you move westerly, you come upon Drake Street cross, D Street crosswalk. You can see that we're four lanes on 24th Street at this location. There's also signage for the approaching merger, and then you go through the merger all the way up through Bay Street and start reaching into Alder-A Street crossing, which is highlighted by the orange. The blue that is showing the C Street loop or turnaround that will, traffic that is heading eastbound to turn back to go westbound is shown in the blue, and you'll, you can see that the traffic will be focused on looking to the right to try to merge into traffic at that location. So, the concern, the main concerns with the crosswalks is as you're driving through a merge, lane merge, the drivers are focused on looking over their shoulders and the cars adjacent to them as they are traveling westbound, so they are not focused on the activities ahead. With a crosswalk in that close proximity to the crosswalk does not provide the driver enough reaction time to safely come to a stop prior to the crosswalk. In addition, if cars are at the stop, the crosswalk and have stopped, there's the potential that the cars that are approaching them will not recognize that the car has stopped and potentially cause a rear-end chain reaction. So, moving on, staff recommends the removal of the 24th Street crosswalk at Alder and A Streets and D Street, Drake and D Streets, in order for us to continue with the design development of the project. Staff is, staff has received several comments and concerns from the neighborhoods and citizens that the removal of the crosswalk would create a hardship. Staff is, is accept, would accept staff, or asked, provide the option to, in order for, if we do replace the, the crosswalks, if council directs staff to look at other options in other locations for a potential crosswalk on the 24th Street corridor. That completes my presentation.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many people would like to speak in opposition to the recommendation of staff? Raise your hands if you would like to do that. So, I'm going to ask you to line up along this aisle, right here. Go ahead and do that now. So, just as a reminder, it's 15 minutes, and you'll see the number of people who'd like to speak, so we just ask that you observe the guidelines that I provided earlier. So, if you would come forward and introduce yourself and proceed.
Hello, Honorable Mayor Go and City Council Members. My name is Gary Entz, and the purpose of this meeting was to discuss the removal of our neighborhood crosswalks. And what concerns most of us is, is there were, there's no alternatives. There's nothing in the plan for getting us across to, across to our other side of our neighborhoods. We're very concerned. And so, I'm here to, to advocate. I'm a father to my kids and to the Westchester neighborhood. Many of us here are residents for the same reason, and we're to advocate for saving our access to, to the south side. Those of us on the north side will be cut off if there are no pedestrian crosswalks. There will be a .9 mile, nearly a one-mile, 13-block strip of six-lane traffic, and the city has proposed that we go to F Street or Oak Street to cross. That's going to add over a mile to a round trip to our city park, to our Franklin Elementary, to, to our friends, to the churches on the south side, to preschools on the south side. We're very concerned, and that's why I think we see a long line here today. We are opposing the removal of the crosswalks, and instead, we're asking you to save those crosswalks for our community and to actually make them safer. First off, we're a cohesive neighborhood. If you know anything about Westchester, it's very cohesive. We have a, we have a magazine called The Westchester. It announces the celebrations that we have every year. We get together in Jastro for Easter egg hunts, for Fourth of July parties. Our, our park, Jastro, is on the south side of 24th. Our Franklin Elementary on the south side of 24th. Many churches are on the south side of 24th. Our community pool and racket club is on the south side of 24th. If there's no pedestrian access, we're going to have no access to so many things that are so important to us. So, it's very important that we save our access, and then we're not forced, because truthfully, no one's going to walk all the way to F or all the way to Oak just to get there. We're going to be forced into cars, and we're going to lose out on that sense of cohesiveness that we have, that we enjoy so much about our Westchester neighborhood. So, I just urge you today, I know I don't have much time. I'm going to get into some more other things. What I recommend, and what we are recommending, is this type of upgrade for Alder Street or an adjacent street. We're open to having it at Cedar, maybe, something like that. This is an at-grade, controlled, push-button-activated crosswalk with a pedestrian median island. So, what you see here is people say, for instance, we're coming from the right, we push a button, and it's synchronized with, with F Street so that when there's a lull in traffic, the pedestrian is able to cross to a safe pedestrian median island. They push another button, and that's timed synchronized with Oak Street. And so, when there's a lull in traffic on that side, we'll be able to get across safely to the south side, or from the south to the north. So, we think this is a win-win situation. Pedestrians will be safe, it will be a signalized crosswalk, and commuters will be able to get through without any disruption or minimized disruption to traffic. And so, this is what we are recommending and what our petition asks for. I would also add that the Drake Street crossing is used, and there is a brand-new, fairly, a few years ago, the High Desert Medical College moved in right on Drake Street and 24th. And so, not only do neighbors use this, but students and staff of the college use it to get to lunch spots and then back to school. So, I would recommend saving this and upgrading this crosswalk as well. I'm going to leave time. That's what we're talking about here, and what, what I would recommend is, I'm not an engineer, but something like this I have seen in our town. So, it's, it's a pedestrian crosswalk that is lit up, and it's pedestrian-activated so that traffic would be able to see the pedestrians, and it would be activated only when pedestrians are there. So, there are things we can do with these crosswalks. We don't have to take them away. And I will tell you this, jaywalking in California is only when you're crossing between two streets that are controlled with controlled pedestrian crosswalks. That means that we are legally in our right to cross this street wherever we want. It is not illegal, but, but taking the crosswalks away will make it very, very dangerous, because people will cross where it's most convenient, and it's not going to be the fault of the pedestrian when there are accidents, but the city may be held liable when that happens. So, we are urging you to save our crosswalks and to consider, highly consider upgrading them. And I'm not alone. Our petition that we will give to you is up to 433 signatures, so I'm not alone in this petition. And so, I'm going to leave it to others. I urge you to both save and upgrade our crosswalks. We've done it in other places. At Commercial Drive, we looked at the need for pedestrians and... And now there's a crosswalk there at Commercial Drive across Truckston. And we also did it at Cantoria Drive across 178, giving City and the Hills residents access to their park and their schools. And now Westchester is asking you to look at best pedestrian need downtown and act on it. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Entz.
Let me wait for those to be distributed, if I could, please. And could I have that up on the screen?
Thank you. Please introduce yourself and go ahead.
My name is Terry Maxwell. I'm a resident right off of 24th Street. I wanted to make sure that the council had seen this. This was the public notice that was posted on either side of 24th Street at the crosswalk that's at A Street. Now, if you read it carefully, it says nothing about what you saw in your administrative report. What it says is that based on this uniform traffic control device, that it encourages people to go to either F Street or Oak Street. It says nothing about some of these things that TY Lin has been shown to you. And I would ask, where is TY Lin? Why, why is that engineer not here tonight to explain to everybody why he won't sign off on it? And explain to you what he would sign off on. Because I think Gary gave you some ideas on, on what could be done. Why aren't you being presented any ideas? You're being given a false choice. It's either you got to get rid of these crosswalks or you're going to risk people getting hurt. That narrowing currently is already there. For 60, 70 years, they've been narrowing right before Alder. And there hasn't been one person killed in that, that crosswalk that I could find. So I'm not sure that, that, why he's doing this. I will conjecture that everybody on the council should consider that this is really about the TRIP program. If you put these crosswalks in and you delay the traffic, you defeat the purpose of doing the widening of 24th Street. Because as I've said many times, 24th Street, our biggest problem is we've got speeding. We don't have that much traffic on 24th Street, especially where you're talking about. And you've destroyed the cohesiveness and this, this crosswalk completely completes that process. So I urge you to come up with some other ideas, ask that there be other opportunities, other things that this, this engineer, get to the engineer and find out exactly what he wants. But again, this is all about TRIP. It's not really about whether they're worried about cohesion. Now, the last thing I put in your, your packet was a letter from Vice Mayor Smith. This appeared in the, the original EIR. And I'll just read for you probably the most important thing. He says recycling, bicycling and walking facilities will be incorporated into all transportation projects unless exceptional circumstances exist. Since this project is using federal money, it would seem that it would have to comply with this policy. There are no exceptional circumstances. So quite frankly, you've done no EIR. You've given no, no negative declaration on exactly what's going on here. You would really have to decertify your EIR that exists in order to do what you're planning on doing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Jason Spurber. I live on Pine, north of 24th Street. I'm a parent at Franklin Elementary. Councilmember Gonzalez, Mayor Go, you both know my children. And seven years ago, last week actually, I wrote an op-ed for International Walk to School Day in the Californian, talking about how when my oldest was in kindergarten, we would walk across at Alder Street with a crossing guard. And it was still very dangerous, even with the crossing guard. There were some near misses. The following year, we went to the crosswalk and discovered that the crossing guard had been defunded. Removal without an option to fix the problem is not a solution. Echoing what Mr. Maxwell and Mr. Entz have said, we need to have all solutions on the table from community members rather than just a blanket removal. There are solutions. Gary has, has laid out a bunch of them. There are more things we can do to make it safer. We are open to moving it. Just don't get rid of it totally because our community needs it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have about four minutes left, so I'd ask you to make your statements quickly and suggest that you avoid repeating what the prior speakers have said.
My name is John Wilson. I'm at 2012 E Street. I've lived downtown and been associated with businesses since 1973 in that location. I'm here at the request of Judith over here to discuss the exactness or lack of exactness of the project. Mainly it has to do with TY Lin refusing to sign their own plans. They've been tasked with the scope of work laid out by the city and they have flawed design. They have refused to follow the EIR in providing these crosswalks. Now they're trying to blackmail the city of Bakersfield out of the $5.9 million that they were being paid but not accepting responsibility. They will not sign their plans unless this crosswalk is removed. That is blackmail. Blackmail. $5.9 million with it. At this point, I know I don't have much time, but I gave you seven pages of comments about the EIR needs to be redone. The design needs redone. They designed the same things that they're complaining about, the lack of sight distance. They designed that. The crosswalk is not on any plan that you can find. You look on the TRIP website, that crosswalk is not on the plans. They've been paid, again, $5.9 million. There's no crosswalk on the plans. I would suggest two things. TY Lin was bought in 1989 by a company in Dubai called Dar Hadassah. We have been complaining about the people up here using out-of-town attorneys. Dubai is really out of town. Two things. I would find TY Lin breached a contract. Number two, I'd find out who the engineer of record is that refuses to sign these plans and file a complaint with the state board. They designed it, now they won't do it. It's called extortion and blackmail. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
I see we're kind of running down on time a little bit and just a few more speakers left. By any chance, would you be so kind to extend a little bit?
Colleagues? Motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
That we extend the time so these people have an opportunity to talk?
Okay.
Thank you.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Okay. We'll add another 15 minutes, which will allow the other side also 15 minutes.
Good afternoon, I mean, good evening, Mayor and honorable council members. And thank you, Councilmember Parlier. My name is Judith Harniman. Some of you know me. I live at 2405 Alder Street, right next to the crosswalks that are being proposed to be removed. I'm not sure, frankly, where I stand. I read, I read the administrative report. TY Lin noted four points. One of the points that I think needs to be brought forward is that my driveway is right at the turn right eye, right next to the crosswalk. And if I come around that corner and there's another vehicle blocking my driveway, there is the potential that I would be backing up onto that crosswalk. So whatever considerations you have for a crosswalk or not having a crosswalk, I really ask that you think about the impacts of the people that will be right next to it. I understand the passion for wanting a crosswalk. I think it's important. But the design elements may have not been thoroughly thought through. Removing it without further research, I think, is premature. There are design aspects in this project that aren't in alignment with the American Association of State Highways and Transportation, as well as design elements that aren't in alignment with the Policy on Geometric Design for Intersections, which is published by the Federal Highway Administration. So I really urge you to consider all the options. I find it very interesting also that the engineer of record is refusing to sign off on this. These are experts and they, they seem to be going back and forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members and staff. My name is Vanessa Van Gell. I reside on A Street. I do oppose the removal of the crosswalks and I'm in favor of signalizing the crosswalk, whether it remain on A Alder or you move it to a different tree street. In the matter of the crosswalk on A and 24th Street and the seven cul-de-sacs on the south side of 24th Street, I will make my point and in doing so, must go back to 2012. On November 14th, 2012, city staff recommended and city council approved the installation of the seven cul-de-sacs. This was at the, quote, "request" of the Do It Right, Do It Now group and other southside residents. The primary purpose and need of this request was to restrict vehicular and pedestrian access to their streets, which would enable their children to play safely in the street. These residents' wishes were granted, per attorney Virginia Gennaro, quote, "In fact, constructing the cul-de-sacs on the south side of 24th Street at the request of the community was the result of staff's sensitivity," and I emphasize the word sensitivity, "to the concerns of those impacted by this project, even though that eventually created the need for a revision and recirculation of the environmental document for 24th Street." Ms. Gennaro further states, "Residents on the south side wanted cul-de-sacs. The city agreed and installed them," close quote. Currently, the city is intending on removing the crosswalk at A Street and 24th. As a direct result of the city's public notice of removal, hundreds of residents north of 24th Street have unified and are petitioning the city, requesting not only to retain, but to signalize this crosswalk for the purpose and need for the safety of themselves and their children. The installation of the seven cul-de-sacs had a significant negative impact on the neighborhood's accessibility and cohesion. The A Street crosswalk is the last link or connector for both sides of 24th Street. The removal of this crosswalk will eliminate option of community connectivity and further degrade the walkability, bikeability, accessibility and cohesion of the Westchester neighborhood. I pose to you this question, my council members. If the city was sensitive to the concerns of the southside residents and the safety of their children, shouldn't the northside residents, also impacted by the 24th Street widening project, deserve and receive the same respect and consideration? Shouldn't the health, safety and well-being of the children on both sides of 24th Street be of equal importance and concern to our city's elected officials? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Go, honorable council members. My name is Tony Deng and I'm Executive Director of Californian Walks. We are the statewide advocacy organization for pedestrian safety. And as we outlined in the letter that I sent to council last week, we believe that it is irresponsible for the city to remove the crosswalks without providing an alternative. Research has shown that at those distances, the mile between the provided crosswalks at Oak and F Street, people are going to cross regardless. So it is incumbent upon the city to provide a safe crossing alternative. As we outlined in the letter, we believe that the, that the city, the city council should direct staff to evaluate providing a alternative crossing further down on 24th Street, potentially at Pine Street, using the latest pedestrian safety countermeasures that are fairly recognized, including a pedestrian hybrid beacon, a pedestrian median island and high-visibility crosswalks. So I urge you to provide that direction to staff and I'm happy to continue working with staff to, to make sure that there is access for the community across 24th Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deng. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Snyder and I'm here for Snyder's Cyclery. And I stand in conjunction with other speakers on the concerns that are brought up. And I'm here for those who bicycle commute and we do need safer crosswalks. We, it will only aid in community involvement and we have to have access for pedestrian and bicycling commuters just because with more mobility increases sales within local economies and supports our local economy, which we really want to do at this time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Jim Ross and I live at 2222nd Street. And I have a simple common sense thing, has nothing to do with contracts, has nothing to do with the legal aspects of the federal government, but it's simply common sense. Kids, not cars. These kids that are in here right now, you think they're going to walk a mile around to get to it? Nope. So anyway, kids, not cars. Think about what's a rational approach.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name's Jennifer Cordova. I live at 2617 Bay Street. And I don't really have anything new to say that hasn't already been said. The community, safety and all of that stuff is very important, but I have stuck it out here tonight with a handful of moms and a dozen kids. And we haven't made it through this, so I'm the last one standing. And we're here because it's important. It's important to our families. It's important to our kids. And so by golly, I just felt like I needed to stay here and say something because we have been here since 5:15 with some little people that do not know what's going on, but they love the park. They're going to go to the elementary school and they love to do things in their neighborhood. And it's really, really important to our neighborhood and to Westchester. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cordova. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Zachary Griffin. I am owner and operator at Kern Active Transportation and I work for a local school district. And I would like to say that that last speaker nailed it. That these kids behind us and that access, yeah, we could talk about the federal guidelines that obviously are encouraging active transportation. You guys are well aware of that. We all are probably fairly aware of our pedestrian issues here in Kern County and in Bakersfield. And not to mention the obesity issues that we suffer here in our community. All of these things get back to our young people. And, you know, I have the luxury of being around young middle school kids all the time. And with that, I encourage you guys, particularly in our district, we've had to see the county come back and spend multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars to repair an intersection that was a three-legged intersection, which means that only three of the four crossing options were available. So not only as one of the previous, I think it was Ms. Snyder mentioned, that financially for businesses, it matters to have good crosswalks so that we can continue to move people back and forth. Unless you're in a car going through a drive-through, and I've never seen anyone go through a drive-through at 55 miles an hour, you still are slowing down and stopping. So when we're talking about the downtown area, not only is it human beings, but it's human beings who shop. And we want to continue to facilitate that. So I'm here tonight to stand with the rest of my advocates for pedestrian, for families, for healthy communities, to support keeping this crosswalk, finding another alternative measure. And as Mr. Entz mentioned, there are, and I, quite frankly, I'm not an engineer, but I cannot imagine how someone who you would hire in the capacity that you have hired them in could not come up with alternates. I have seen this done across the country. It's not new. In fact, 178 has a pedestrian bridge. On North Chester, there is a pedestrian tunnel that started from 1921, death of two children who crossed, going from Standard to their, to their library across the street. So I figure if in 1921, they could figure out how to move people back and forth, and that is still there, we use that all the time, that we here in the 2000s could come up with a situation that would not eliminate and force people to either break the law, not necessarily, and again, as Mr. Entz pointed out, it isn't really breaking the law at that scenario. It's just endangering their lives, creating a, a problem that we're going to eventually have to get to. Please, I implore upon you, do the right thing, give us up more options. Please, I implore upon you, do the right thing, give us up more options, and make a better, more livable community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Ms. Van Gell, I know that you've been here before. Mom, would you like to come forward first? I know you have a child there, and then...
My statement will be brief.
Thank you.
So my name is Anne Marie Nolan, and I'm a resident on Pine. I used to live on Spruce, sorry. I live on the south side of 24th. A lot of the arguments we've heard today has been for north of 24th not being able to access the south. But I would like to make an argument for the south side to be able to make it to the grocery store and go to the farmer's market by foot. And also, as a public health nurse, I've been involved in projects that look at the walkability and the effects on health outcomes of the population. So I would encourage you to take a look at other options for walkability in the expansion of 24th Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Vanessa Van Gell, and I did just speak on behalf of myself, but I would like to read a letter from Mr. Bob Brayley. He was unable to attend. Do I have permission to do that?
Yes.
Thank you. His position is the same as the speakers that just spoke. He is against removing the crosswalk. This is from Mr. Bob Brayley. Dear City Council, the city cannot remove the two crosswalks without conducting further environmental review under CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act. I believe that the city must conduct a subsequent or supplemental EIR in this instance. The city stated in the REIR, Recirculated Document, conducted for the project that the crosswalks were a "neighborhood unifying element," and that they would ensure that there would be no further impacts on community cohesion. The city admitted that the two neighborhoods on either side of 24th Street were highly cohesive communities. The city also stated in the EIR that maintenance of the crosswalks would ensure that there were no impacts on pedestrian facilities and/or bicycle access. Also, the city stated in the EIR that maintaining the crosswalks would ensure that there would be no significant impacts on public services. The city acknowledged that many residents continued to use the crosswalks to access public schools, bus stops, hospitals, churches, libraries, public facilities, commercial and retail uses, and other existing land uses in the area. The city also stated that the crosswalks were needed to safely cross 24th Street. This is the city speaking. This is words from this own city and from the documents. Removal of the crosswalks at this juncture would necessitate a further environmental review to determine whether or not there would be significant environmental impacts associated with all of the issues outlined above, including community cohesion, pedestrian facilities, and public services. Finally, the potential safety impacts that the city is now arguing that the crosswalks pose is new information of substantial importance that imposes a significant environmental impact that was not analyzed in the EIR or REIR. I urge you to conduct additional environmental review under CEQA for the project before voting to remove the crosswalks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Gell. Now, is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of staff's recommendation? Please come forward at this time.
My name is Tyson O'Brien. I am in favor, I'm a resident, longtime resident, at 2330 A Street. On the corner, the proposed removal of the crosswalk is actually in front of my house. So I've been living in that residence since 1989, and I've seen a lot of things on that corner. I've seen, I've seen a lot of these people that got up in, you know, the opposite of how I feel. And I know they don't use that crosswalk. Maybe they did for the photo shoot, but I've been there for 29 years, and I know for a fact that they do not use that crosswalk. If they do, it's maybe once a year. Two, it's not safe to cross that street right now. No one drives 45 miles an hour. The speed limit is 45. Everyone drives at least 50 to 60, 70 miles an hour. I see one gentleman cross the street to go take his kids to school this current school season. I have a child that goes to Franklin Elementary as well. I have two children, so I'm very concerned about the safety for my children on the corner of that street. One is a six-year-old, and one is a one-year-old. And like I said, I've lived at that house since I was nine years old, so my parents have instilled in me to be safe as well. And I just don't see the crosswalk a benefit to this community, because no one essentially uses it now, because of its danger. It is a dangerous crosswalk. That's why they got rid of, when the other gentleman spoke about the crossing guard that was there in the early 80s or late 80s, early 90s, that woman was there, and she got out, and she helped about two people a day, or maybe that. So that's why the funds was cut, because she didn't have anything to do. There was no one at that time really crossing the street. And years passed, they've never put another crosswalk, crossing guard there. And I had another gentleman ask me, he was crossing the street with his kids, and he said, "Man, no one's going to stop." And I told him, "No, they're not going to stop for you," because that's just, it's, everyone's got a priority in life to go somewhere. And when there's a street that is maintained by police all the time, they're parked right across the street from my house, giving speed tickets all the time, it's like a setup or whatever, but it's very good that they're there, because, you know, the traffic is speeding, and they should actually get there around 6:00 a.m., because there's plenty of people speeding there at 6:00 a.m. They should be there at Friday at 1:00 in the morning. There's plenty of people flying down the street at 1:00 in the morning constantly. So people mention their children about, think of the kids, think of the kids. I was that kid that knew that that street was dangerous 20 years ago, and it's even more dangerous at this point now. And I don't think that adding a crosswalk to a six-lane street is going to make any benefit for our safety of our children, who will grow up to be someone like myself and remember how dangerous it was to cross that street, and not recommend it for their children to do it later. So I don't believe we have any else, anyone to talk behind me, but I'll also consider, there's an app called Next Door. I'm sure a few of my neighbors are well aware of it, and we have constant break-ins, cars breaking into our car, people homeless, you know. Every day I see text messages saying someone's broken in their car. We, I live on that corner, and I see people going across that street. I've had people hang out in front of my house, just hanging out on the corner, taking a break, walking down the street, trying to get across the street. I've even had people, this has happened about three months ago, I had someone come up to my door, holding a syringe needle, young man, about 26 years old, asking, could he use, to know what time it was. So that's an example of, that street, that street is like downtown. Chester Avenue, I deal with anyone that's probably leaving the bus station to go to, I don't know, 99 Highway or something like that, or go down Buck Owens Boulevard. So plenty of people walk down that street, but they're not crossing it to get to a home or say. And the cohesiveness, they mention going north to Smart and Final and whatnot, you know. When I go to Smart and Final, I'm usually getting more than what I want to carry with when I'm walking. So I think most of us probably drive our car there. I do. I could walk, but I don't want to die crossing that street. And if, even if it had another crosswalk, I still wouldn't cross it, just because people are not concerned about other people's lives. You know, every day I look out my window, I see a memorial across the street from my house. Someone passed away because of the construction, because of the delays over the years that the city has postponed, someone died finally from it. And I don't want to see another memorial in front of my house because someone crossing the street. So I urge that the city and the council to hear my message and hear my plea. From a long time, I was born in Bakersfield. I don't plan on going anywhere anytime soon. I've been a longtime resident of this community and of Westchester since 1989. So please, if you can, you know, remove this. I'm open to options. You know, they say that it's too far, a mile this way, a mile that way. Like I said, I've lived in the neighborhood basically ever since, and I went to Franklin when I started in the fourth grade. So I've experienced Westchester probably more than just anyone in this audience, as far as a life can be turned. So if you want to go to get across the street, you can go down to F Street and cross the street. If I want to go, if I live on the north side of Westchester, I can go access Beach Park from the bike trail. There's a park over there on the north side, and if you really want to get across, you can ride the bike trail. So those avid bikers can use the bike path that they've been granted. And that's pretty much all I have to say. I don't really think it's a good idea to keep the crosswalks. It's a bad decision for the city, and I think there's only going to be lawsuits ahead in the near upcoming future from, hopefully, no accidents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? So at this time, is there anyone who would like to rebut in opposition? Please come forward. We have a total of five minutes for each side to do a rebuttal. Please introduce yourself and proceed.
Thank you. Again, my name's Gary Entz, and I understand the gentleman's concerns about safety of that crosswalk. The paint on it currently is difficult to see. Drivers tend not to see it. The flashing yellow lights are on for only a fraction of the day. So if you're crossing outside of those times, you don't have the benefit of the flashing yellow lights. Drivers frequently fail to acknowledge the presence of pedestrians. That is a fact, and that is a problem that Bakersfield needs to address, right? Public education for its drivers about the law when it comes to the presence of pedestrians. This says nothing about the crosswalk itself, though. This is another issue that we need to address. In any case, the crosswalk as it is, is not very reassuring for anyone. So those of us who use it, we're very, very careful when we do. And when I use it, and I do use it, and I use it frequently, so I want to take issue with the point that nobody uses it. I use it quite a bit, and with my kids, and we wait for a lull in traffic so that it's safe to cross, and we get across safely, because we're very observant. But, and you got letters from others who said that they do use it, and you also got letters from residents who say that if it were built so that I felt safe, I would use it quite a bit. So the point I want to make is that the danger that he addresses, yes, it's not the safest crosswalk location, it's not the safest crosswalk in the world because of the current condition of it. But the danger of the past and the danger of the present doesn't have to be the danger of the future. There's plenty of crosswalk technology out there and ways that we can do this, so that we can build it safely, and so that we can build the Drake Street one safely. And I would also like to add, if the city wants to go all out with pedestrian safety, it would also consider adding an additional timed crosswalk at Beach Street, because those on the northwest side of Westchester, their most viable way to cross is there, at Beach, so that they could get to the Jastrow Park and to their school. So those are a few of my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Entz. Anyone else?
I'll be real brief. My name's John Wilson. One of the things that's missing, and we looked all over for it, is the City of Bakersfield Traffic Engineering Division has published a document that says "Suggested Route to School." And in that document, it states, "A map for most elementary schools within the city has been developed that shows suggested routes to school for schoolchildren from the surrounding residential community." And going through the documents, they see very little information, if any, from Franklin. 35% of the Franklin school area lies north of 24th Street, but nobody's ever looked for this map. Nobody's ever produced the suggested map, which shows the school crossing guard. Where's the map? How do the kids get to school? Like I said, the big recommendation would be is put a pedestrian-operated signal in. That's the easiest way to avoid potential REI litigation, a potential huge change order from Thailand. And think of the contingent line build you have. Thailand said the intersection is unsafe. You have to do something to avoid problems. Put the pedestrian-operated signal in and save time, money, and pain. Listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. We have about 40 seconds left. Anybody else to rebut? Is there anybody who would like to rebut now in support? We have five minutes for the rebuttal and support.
Once again, my name is Tyson O'Brien. I live at the corner of 2330 A Street. My house has been shown in the pictures tonight. We mentioned safety, you know, I'm going to be honest with you, passing 24th Street is only one hurdle. There's still 21st Street, which is another hurdle. There is no crosswalk at all there, and I see many of my neighbors wait a long time to even get across that street, to go to Franklin. Okay? And I also kind of feel that some of my opposers are really out of touch, because I was a student of Franklin. I went to Franklin Elementary. I was a fourth grader, graduated, you know, my son is a student at Franklin. I've heard in conversations tonight that the, my opposers' children don't even go to Franklin Elementary School. So I really feel that there really are, it's unfortunate, it's a disjustice to our community, because they don't even support the school that they are. They don't even put their kids in that school. So I do put my kids in that school, and I support, and I, and I'm aware, well aware that a lot of students, my son's friends live across the street from me, on the other side of Alder. Okay? So I'm not going to tell my six-year-old son to cross the street to go visit his son, his friend, even if there was a crosswalk there. It's not going to happen. And I don't think any of these parents here would let their seven-year-old, eight-year-old kid veer off to cross that street. I wouldn't let my seven-year-old, eight-year-old kid cross the street, and I live at the street. So, and this is even if I'm thinking of a six-lane highway. So also, they mentioned that the students that live across the street, I think he said a percentage of 75% or something like that, they have buses that are on that side of the, that side of 24th Street that bus those students to Franklin Elementary School. So I'm not sure where that, where, what that, what he's trying to say, because I, like I said, I live there, and I can vouch for one parent that crosses that street during the week. I can vouch for one parent, and I spoke into him, you know. So I don't know about these other, as far as Drake Street, I don't see why they would cross that street to go to Franklin, because it's a little bit further away. But A Street is really dangerous, and I just don't see how it's going to help elementary students get to school. I don't see how parents, I can see how a parent will say, "Yeah, we don't have a car, or we want to walk to school." or we want to walk to school today. I can understand that. But I can't understand, are these parents actually thinking future? Are they thinking about when their kids are in high school? Are they thinking about when they're, when they leave their home? And when the, they're not think, they're thinking about today, and I'm thinking about 15 years from now. My kid would be grown, their kid would be grown, and none of you on the panel may not be here, may be on the panel. I may still be living in that same home, but I can tell you the cars are only going to go faster down that street. They're not going to slow down. There's only going to be more traffic. We all know that our city is growing, and we want that. We've had discussion on this panel about increasing sales tax. Why? So that we can put more into our community and let it grow. Putting a crosswalk in, in the middle of essentially a highway is, is, to me, is going backwards. I don't feel that it's going to increase the cohesiveness or make it better to live in West Chester because I can cross this six-lane highway now. I don't feel that, I don't feel that it's good for the city to spend its money there, you know, on, on crosswalks. I just, homelessness, if you want to put a center divider in the middle of the place, and now people can sleep there in the middle of the street, you know, I, you have to put, think about all these things. And I don't think anyone, if the homeless guy gets hit in the middle of the street while he was sleeping in the, you know, in the crosswalk, and he stumbles because he's had too much to drink, I don't think we'll, no one wants to see that. So I don't agree with the crosswalks. I think it's not safe for our city. I think it's too much money to spend. It's a waste of time, in my opinion, and I hope that this, the mayor and the council will make the right decision into keeping our city safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Thank you to all of you who have participated in discussion, in this discussion. We appreciate your comments, your engagement in this. And at this time, I'll close the public hearing and return to council for comment and action. Councilmember Vice, Vice Mayor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Wow, great community turnout, great families with kids. Thank you, moms. I don't see as many kids as I did two hours ago, but good job. Democracy in action. I have a lot of thoughts. I think that the EIR addressed pedestrian access. The EIR promised pedestrian connectivity, and I think the historic pedestrian corridor should be maintained. I think that we should stop building transportation through communities and begin to build communities through transportation so that we build transportation for all users, walkers included. We're not building a highway. We're building an arterial road. We have stops at M and Chester and F and H, and I probably missed a couple. It's, the road has people turning on to it, turning off of it at various places. It's not a freeway. It has stops. We cannot continue to treat pedestrians the way that we have in the past in Bakersfield. We can't say, well, they can just go down the street because that's not what they do. As Mr. Deng from California Walks mentioned, the studies, research shows that they will, if you build a community that is not convenient to walk in, they will find a walk, a convenient walk, which is not safe. And so that's why we have the 12th worst pedestrian fatalities in the nation and number one in California. We need to change the way we look at pedestrians. The type of facilities that Mr. Ence showed on the screen greatly increase the safety of a crosswalk. The City of Tucson's been putting in those types of facilities since 1990s. Federal Highway Administration did a rather intensive study on, they had about 100 of them installed, and they installed places where they hadn't, they studied ones that, where they had installed them in other places. The city continued to have increase in accidents. I think it was 140% where they were not installed, and a reduction of pedestrian injury rates of 86% where they were installed. So you can create a safe pedestrian crossing on an arterial street. You can synchronize traffic. Yes, some people will have to stop as they do at F and H and Chester and M when they turn, but it will be safer. So I am in favor of finding a solution. Yes, maybe the A Alder does not work. Maybe it's a half a block or a block or two blocks away from there where the mergers are complete and there's enough sight distances and people are paying attention that we can install something safer. That would be my direction. I guess I would just also mention that we do have a complete streets policy in Bakersfield. To read from it, "Complete Streets" is defined as transportation facilities that are planned, designed, operated, and maintained to provide safe mobility for all users, including bicyclists, pedestrians, et cetera. It also says the City of Bakersfield will apply this complete streets policy to all roadway projects, including those involving new construction, reconstruction, retrofits. I believe we have an existing resolution that says we should provide safe access. We have an EIR that says we should provide pedestrian connectivity, and we have a moral obligation to reduce the pedestrian fatality and injuries in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo the comments by Vice Mayor Smith and thank all the moms and dads and children who participated in tonight's meeting. I really particularly enjoyed all the children, and we could hear them loud and clear, and that's really is a significant thing. And Dr. Ross made a, an important point about how children travel as opposed to what the design is in our community. I share Vice Mayor Smith's priority in improving walkability for pedestrians throughout Bakersfield, and I can't think of a better place to create more walkable conditions than downtown Bakersfield and West Chester. And so I'd like to continue to advocate for more walkable streets and neighborhoods as much as I can. I also am in favor of connectivity between North and South 24th Street. I think that's an important thing for both sides of West Chester to come together, and there's no better way than the literal way of maintaining a crosswalk. And I believe that there are ways to design a safe crossing, as Vice Mayor Smith indicated, and so has, so have many others tonight. So I'm moving staff's recommendation and including in my motion direction to staff to bring back design plans for council's approval that reflect a replacement crosswalk as close as possible to A Street, Alder Street, between North and South 24th Street so that the history of, of safe crossing is preserved.
Thank you. We have some more council members who would like to speak. Councilmember Freeman.
Well, I don't want to be repetitious because I agree completely with my colleagues. One thing I'd like Public Works to consider is, is it possible to reduce the speed limit in conjunction with all the other things we're doing? Maybe you can answer that tonight, but is it really required? I don't know what the speed limit, everybody goes 55, and on most arterials, that is the speed limit, which is a highway speed limit. Speed is what makes things unsafe. The people, reason, reason people aren't using that crosswalk is because everybody's going too fast. And that isn't just that arterial, that's every arterial in this city. If you go to any crosswalk, go to Ming and Buena Vista, there's no way you would ever let a child cross that alone. I wouldn't even my wife do it. I mean, I run, but the design of our transportation system is the arterial grid is a very dangerous conceptual design. So we're two neighborhoods are there that we all want some connectivity to, and we want to solve this problem. If there's any way, as, if you start it back at Oak, but if that Oak, F, that whatever stretch, because see, people are slowing down because of the frequent stoplights once they get into town. The traffic slows because it's got more stoplights. Is there any way we could slow that down to even 45 or something? I think it would, I think if there were crosswalk, a new one there and even the old ones, people would use them more. They're afraid to use them. So I'd just like to add that two cents worth of a, of a suggestion to be explored. Do you have a comment on that, Mr. Fiddler?
Mr. Fiddler.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, yes, there is a process to set speed limits. It can't not be arbitrarily set. We actually have to use the California Vehicle Code to establish the speed limit. We do follow, the city follows this program extensively. We have to follow the California Vehicle Code in order for us to establish the speed limit. Again, the, it's a random sample of vehicles taken over a period of time when the traffic is free-flowing, so there's established guidelines to set those speed limits.
Well, I, I always say, if there's a will, there's a way. The bigger the street with the less frequent stops, it's been proven, the faster people will go. We know that, that's why I don't favor the size of the residential streets and residential neighborhoods that say two fire engines can go 55 miles an hour by each other, so let's make them that big. Size increases speed, we know that. So it's a problem. If there's any way this can be addressed, I just appreciate that it be addressed. Thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I certainly understand the concern of these, West Chester residents, and certainly understand you've had a lot of changes and many are concerning to you. So we've heard, we understand, but yet, and I appreciate the young man in the back, the, the sole supporter of the, of our issue tonight. You, 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 your, your comments were firsthand, but I think what it, what it brings out is that even now, the crosswalks are not safe. So there are reasons why we, it's being recommended, strongly recommended, that we completely change the, remove, and now certainly, you know, your concern is that you're even more being cut off from, from side to side, and that many of you have lived there for years, and just one more blow. So understand, we, we've, we've heard your concerns, we understand your concerns, but believe me, the intention is to make it even better. We're going to be completely redoing it, removing those that basically are not used that much now because they're not safe. But yet certainly there needs to be access and there will be access. So in the pictures that was, the, the one fellow showed, believe me, we will do a good job. We'll consider everything. There will be access, pedestrian and bicycle access from one side to the other, but it'll be the wisest, safest possible. And so our intention is, you know, this huge project that we've been working on, it's to make our transportation better. You say there's not that much traffic at times. Well, we're, we're planning for the next 50 years. That's, that's what we're responsible, that's our responsibility to plan the best transportation possible. Well, now we've got to solve the problem of the cutting off that access, but believe me, it'll be better. That is our intention, and that is what, that's the way it'll end up being, that there will be access, but it'll be safe enough and to, to be used, and it will be used hopefully even more to make those, those two sides as cohesive as possible. So that's our intent. Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question. Has staff or engineering or someone given any consideration, or is there a good answer to what maybe is a layman's understanding of how this impacts traffic flow? Either, and, and the reductions in speed limits is, is a new idea. I hadn't heard that before, but I, I guess from the onset, I was under the impression this project had nothing to do with connectivity. It had to do with increasing or relieving traffic now and into the future. What does a, what does a crosswalk or even a speed limit reduction do to that? Does that have an impact on the intent of the project?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Rivera, obviously, if we introduce another traffic control device into the system, it will have some sort of impact. It can be mitigated to some extent by the use of coordination efforts. As you are well aware, and 24th Street has a continual flow of traffic because of all the turning movements that come in and off the streets, whether it be from Oak, I mean, I'm sorry, F Street to the east, or the residential streets that are approaching onto 24th Street. So in regards to your question, will it have an impact to the traffic flow? Yes, but it can be mitigated to a certain extent through coordinated efforts. To, to give you an exact detail of what the impact would be, I couldn't do at this point until we, we actually look at some of the design aspects of what is being proposed. Obviously, if we had to stop traffic for them to cross all six lanes of roadway and a median in one fell swoop, that would have a significant impact to the transportation system because a vehicle, or a pedestrian is calculated to walk about three feet per second. So if you had to cross the whole, stop the traffic for them to cross the whole roadway would create a significant time delay for traffic in both directions. Some of the scenarios that have been proposed where they would actually break the traffic and try, provide a median, an area in the median for refuge, that would break that time delay in half, that would improve the ability to, to mitigate some of those delays. Also like to point out that there was several comments from the public that, why isn't TYLIN here? TYLIN is here. We do have staff from TYLIN in the audience that are available to answer questions in regards to their design. They have evaluated the Alder Street and A Street for a potential signalized intersection at that location and have found that it is still not a safe scenario because of the close proximity to the merger. So I don't know if that answered all your questions, or?
It did. I guess if we're going to seriously, so, and, and I, and I appreciate the input we've received tonight, and I, and I like the conceptual designs, and, and I agree with Councilmember Gonzalez and Vice Mayor Smith. I guess just when it comes to issues of speed limit changes or, or any other measures that might slow down traffic, I guess I'd like to better understand those impacts if we're really going to consider those in the future. One, one last question. What, what are, what are we projecting the cost of this, of the totality of the 24th Street widening to be at this point? Ballpark it for me?
Sorry, I have several numbers floating in my head. 25 million for construction costs only, for that's for the 24th Street widening improvement.
So that doesn't include design?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez, would you restate your motion?
I am moving that the council approves staff's recommendation and included in that motion directing staff to bring back design plans for council's approval that reflect a replacement crosswalk as close as possible to A Street and Alder Street between North and South 24th Street so that the history of safe crossing is preserved.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for a five-minute break, and colleagues, just a reminder, it's very important, if you do need to leave during public hearing, just let me know, and we can take a break during that time, but let's go ahead and take a break right now for five minutes. And thank you again, those of you who came to speak, we appreciate that. It's eight eleven, we'll start in five minutes. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Hearing items B, appeal by Christian Ramirez of the July eleventh, twenty seventeen decision of the Board of Zoning Adjustment to deny a conditional use permit to allow a recycling center for the purchasing of California redemption value containers from the public in a C1 district located at thirty-three hundred Plans Road. A staff memorandum has been received regarding item ten B, transmitting additional correspondence from the applicant, and Diana Anderly.
Ms. Kitchen, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This item is a request for a conditional use permit to allow a recycling center at an existing neighborhood market located at the corner of Wyble Road and Plans Road in Ward Six. As you can see, the surrounding area is predominantly single-family residential to the north with multifamily residential to the south. And again, the site is developed with a small existing neighborhood market. The site is also zoned for neighborhood commercial uses. As proposed, the operating center would be a sixty-by-twenty-five-foot building, about fifteen hundred square feet, and operational hours would be Monday through Saturday from nine AM to five fifteen PM with two employees on site. This application was submitted, and as it is a conditional use permit, it was scheduled for consideration by the Board of Zoning Adjustment in July of this year. Staff initially recommended approval of the request. However, before the hearing in July, staff received a petition with eighty-eight signatures in opposition from the surrounding neighborhood. In those, in the opposition, the neighborhood stated that the proposed facility would not, is not needed because it did not increase access to recycling in the community, because many of the residents in the area already utilize blue cart programs, and so this was not needed. The applicant, Christian Ramirez, also appeared at the hearing and spoke in support of his business, and notes that he owns and operates several other recycling facilities throughout the community. Ultimately, the Board of Zoning Adjustment decided to deny the conditional use permit and concluded that they could not make the findings required for a conditional use permit. After that denial and appeal was filed by the applicant, and that is why we're here this evening, in the appeal, the applicant provided additional information related to the needs of recycling in the community and requirements by the state for recycling centers. Notably, they referenced that this is within a convenience zone. What is a convenience zone? It is a half-mile radius area that is established by the State of California, and the state requires that certain supermarkets within these convenience zones facilitate recycling in some way, and one of these off-site recycling centers is one way to do that, and that again is a burden on the supermarkets that are within these zones. It does not preempt local land use zoning. So, in this situation, where it's a neighborhood commercial district, we have the ability to require a conditional use permit for these kinds of uses. So, again, in order for there to be a conditional use permit approved, two findings have to be made. One, that the proposed use is deemed to be essential or desirable for the public convenience, and the other is that the proposed use is in harmony with the various elements and objectives of the general plan. Staff concludes that, given that there were over eighty-eight residents in the neighborhood that were in opposition to this use, those findings could not be made, and therefore we're recommending that your council uphold the denial by the Board of Zoning Adjustment. And I am here to answer any other questions, if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many people would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? That's opposition to staff's, opposing staff's recommendation? Seeing none? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or in favor? If you would, well, we don't have that many, so we'll just go in this order, right across.
Good evening, council members, and also Mayor Goh, and I'm Arlana St. Clair, and my family built and manages the apartment complex that is at thirty-four oh-one Wyble Road. And we are in opposition to the CRV facility on Plans, and I would like to take a moment to read a letter.
Excuse me, are we, we wanted opposition to the staff?
She's in support, she's opposing the facility.
Opposing the facility.
Go ahead and continue.
Okay. I would like to read a letter to you. Dear Councilwoman Sullivan, because I would like it entered in the record, I am writing on behalf of St. Clair Investments located at thirty-four oh-one Wyble Road. Our business manages the property located at that address. I am writing to support the decision by the Board of Zoning Adjustment to deny a conditional use permit to operate a CRV facility at thirty-three hundred Plans. Many of our tenants have signed a petition opposing the CRV facility. We happen to agree with their concerns and would like to state our opposition as well. The attached signatures were gathered in preparation for your meeting in August, but the item has been continued until today. On behalf of our company, we are opposed to the project for two reasons. It does not increase access to recycling in the community, as the staff report alleges. In fact, with, in the city today, we do not have an issue with access to recycling opportunities. We have seen a rise in both petty theft, visual blight, and homelessness in the immediate area. The Bakersfield community has an abundance of access to recycling opportunities. First, the city has started a great blue cart program that encourages residents to recycle regularly. Also, according to the State Cal Recycle webpage, there are over fifty-two CRV sites in the metropolitan planning area. Many of these facilities are very close to this thirty-three hundred Plans Road. In fact, the closest one is located near the intersection of Wyble and White Lane. Often time, often time, petty theft isn't reported to the police, or residents are told to go online to complete a report. This facility will encourage homelessness in the area surrounding the CRV facility, directly impacting our business office and the tenants that we serve. We also believe this will lead to increased visual blight in the area. The applicant's responsibility ends at the property line. However, many shopping carts and trash will now find their way onto our properties or those of surrounding neighbors. We take pride in our property and don't want to diminish the atmosphere and the neighborhood we've worked hard to create. Last, our residents are already victims of theft on their porches and balconies, and more. We argue that this facility will increase theft in the area due to expected increase in transients. The Board of Zoning Adjustment knew that this request did not meet the threshold of approval within the staff report. The staff report says it must provide a convenience to the public. There is an abundance of access to recycling programs in the city, and this does nothing to raise the level of convenience. In fact, we argue that there is more than enough access to CRV facilities within the vicinity. Second, it is our position that this is not in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood as it will lead to increased visual blight, homelessness, and petty theft. Thank you in advance for your listening to our concerns.
Thank you. Next speaker, speaking in support of staff's recommendation.
Yes, my name is Frank St. Clair, and I'm also a management and owner of the apartments next door. Thank you for having me. You know, I was personally relieved when the Board of Zoning Adjustment denied the CRV facility request earlier, and I, you know, to agree, I think it's a bad fit for the neighborhood. It's primarily residential around this site, and we do have quite a bit of issues with homeless people passing through already and dropping off trash, rubbish on our facility in the area of apartments around us, and I know it would make it worse. But my personal experience with this is I live over in the Seasons Development, which is over behind Costco on Panaman Stein, and about two and a half, three years ago, I heard that they were putting in a similar facility recycling on the corner of Harrison Stein. And at the time, I thought, you know, well, you know, that would be kind of neat, maybe have recycling nearby, all right, that's great. And not, within less than a month or two with the facility opening up, all of a sudden we started having an issue with shopping carts being dropped off in my area frequently, and other rubbish that appears that the recycling center turned the people away and said, no, you can't drop that off at our place, we need to recycle. And next thing you know, it's in our flower beds, it's around our neighborhood, and it's not pleasant. And I realized when that was going across the street from my work, I said, wow, that's, you know, that's going to be a problem, because that's already a problem in my neighborhood where I live now, and it's going to be a problem by our apartments and the residents in our area now over there, too, if it goes there. So, anyway, the, what I would basically like to say is, you know, we do have a lot of access already in our area, there's several of the recycle facilities nearby, and anyway, I appreciate you guys listening to us, thanks.
Thank you.
Russell Johnson, Common Sense Consulting, on behalf of St. Clair Investments. Couple points I'd like to point out. You were handed out two lists. Both of these lists are available online when you Google "city recycling centers Bakersfield." One is the excerpt of a page from the Kern County Recycling Guide with a list of all the recycling facilities. Also is the CalRecycle list of recycling facilities that are CRV-approved, and this is over, I think there's fifty-two on this list, there's only one in Lamont, the rest are considered in the Bakersfield metro planning area. I'm going to restrict my comments for the rest of the evening just to disputing the claims that the applicant's representative brought forward. False claim one, staff has changed its position. As your council is aware, the process at the city of Bakersfield is that staff has to submit the recommendation of the Board of Zoning Adjustment. So, the staff recommendation reflects the two-to-zero vote in favor of denying the CUP, a decision that was based on information from staff and information that was provided during the public hearing. False claim two by the applicant. Staff does not state how the findings for approving the CUP have not been met. I would draw your attention to the staff report for this item this evening, and it states, I quote, "Given the testimony received at the BZA hearing and the number of signatures in opposition on the petition, staff cannot conclude the necessary findings can be met. Specifically, the proposed use as a recycling center cannot be deemed desirable to the public convenience and cannot be found to be in harmony with the objectives of the Metropolitan General Plan," which involves policies to encourage compatibility of uses. I would further point out, the petitions you were given tonight represent a hundred and, over a hundred and thirty signatures. There was eighty-eight that were gathered for the BZA hearing. Your petitions tonight represent additional hundred and thirty signatures. False claim by the applicant, number three, no evidence was submitted to substantiate claims of increased crime and blight. It is the applicant's job, actually, to submit info disputing or dealing with concerns from neighbors. Because they didn't want to fully study their project impacts, they can't dispute the impacts that many neighbors viewed as substantial issues and items of major concern. Furthermore, the applicant could have attempted to reach out to St. Clair Investments or any of the neighbors who signed the petition. And in fact, my client would have been more than happy to sit with him and would have eagerly had that conversation. Unfortunately, no attempt was ever made to hear some of the neighbors' concerns or what their thoughts were. False claim number four, no evidence submitted during disputing convenience or the convenience zone. During the hearing, public comment and written comment was submitted. During that testimonial, it was argued that if the nearby residents are saying they don't view it as a convenience, then, and are concerned about the adverse impacts on their neighborhood. Basically, what they were saying was, hey, we don't want this going in in our neighborhood, therefore, it's not a convenience for us to have it right across the street. Subsequently, over a hundred and thirty signatures were submitted for tonight's hearing opposing the CRV facility. This clearly is not viewed by the public or the neighborhood as a convenience that they want near their homes. In regards to the convenience zone, it has little determination on your body's approval as the location and zoning still require a conditional use permit. Furthermore, the staff points out that the applicant failed to submit information showing the property and the CRV building footprint would fall within the convenience zone. Part of the property may fall within the convenience zone, but the footprint of where their operations lies potentially could be out, and even the site plan they submitted as an addition with staff memo doesn't show exactly where the convenience zone line lies. Within the city, in addition, furthermore, as staff report points out, the convenience zone can be exempted with an abundance of recycle, when there's an abundance of recycling options. With the city blue cart program and the number of approved CRV facilities in the metro area, clearly, the exemption would be warranted if the retailer in question was requesting it. There's been a lack of evidence to even show that if the retailer, smart and final, is even requesting the convenience zone designation. False claim number five, denying this facility removes CRV options for the poor and poverty-stricken. In fact, the denial doesn't remove a facility, it's preventing an addition and a continued overabundance of facilities. The BZA denied the CUP because there's an abundance of access to recycling and because the local neighbors were opposed to it in their neighborhood. Furthermore, with two facilities on White Lane, there are recycling options located very close nearby. In addition to addressing the false claims made by the applicant, I'll just draw your attention to the two on those lists that I provided you from the Kern County Guide. One is located at two-six-oh-one White Lane, and the second is located at two-one-oh-one White Lane. Both those facilities are less than a mile from the smart and final location referenced by the applicant, and both of them are near the intersection of White Lane and Wyble Road, with the exception that they are on the other side of the freeway. Both of them are east of ninety-nine. With that, that concludes my comments, and I appreciate your time. Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and members of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Earlier, I had asked whether anybody would like to speak in opposition, and nobody came forward, but is there somebody who would like to speak in opposition? I think you maybe misunderstood. Please introduce yourself.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Chris Ramirez. I manage and run part of our company, family-run business here in Bakersfield. I grew up in Bakersfield, I graduated off Bridgeview High School, and also attended CSUB. I just wanted to thank the staff as well for helping me throughout the process of the conditional use permit. My family currently has seven locations here in Bakersfield. We are looking to pretty much open up a new one with your guys' approval. We have been able to show that we've operated successfully throughout the years, trained our employees, and we've been able to prove that we also keep our sites clean. We have an employee full-time that usually takes care of the shopping carts if there's any around, and that's a full-time employee, seven days a week, that's always driving around, making sure on every site that it looks nice and presentable. And as far, that's our main goal as well, to be presentable, since we've been a real old reci- Since we've been a real old recyclers here, we've been here for previous amount of years, and we just want to continue and serve our community and keep the city nice and clean. I hope you guys could approve the CUP in order for us just to be able to keep the city nice and clean and be able to serve our community as far as me being a resident here in Bakersfield, California. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. There's an opportunity now to rebut, oh, I'm sorry, come forward if you'd like to speak in opposition to Steph's recommendation.
I do. My name is Joanna Anderly, and I'm here in support of Mr. Ramirez. I know that at the Board of Adjustments, there is one person that spoke up in opposition to it at that time, but there was really no discussion about what this convenience zone was, and that board wasn't provided with enough information in my belief to understand the meaning of it. And if the state, in conjunction with the bottling companies and with the grocers, decided this was a great idea, and I challenge you to look on your streets to see if you can find any bottles and cans amongst the litter. It's picked up. When I'm downtown, I take my can and stick it on top of the trash can. I know within 20 minutes, someone will take it rather than stick it in the pot. But the convenience zone, if there's no one in it, what happens is really the supermarket or, in this case, Smart and Final has two choices. One choice is to start collecting the bottles and cans and refunding themselves. No supermarket or market will do that. They don't have the space, they don't have the extra staff to do it, and that's why this convenience zone was created. The manager of the Smart and Final, Mr. Victor Rios, was disappointed that he didn't get a notice of the last meeting, and he's very concerned, because what happens to him now is that if this goes through, the denial action goes through, he has to pay $36,500 a year in fines to the state of California, which he says is half an employee, a part-time employee, for a whole year. And what you don't understand also is that for the public convenience or welfare, which is the way that the finding is stated in your ordinance, is that it's approximately, it's over 2,000, is it 2,000 a month? Oh, no, it's 88,000. Eighty-eight thousand dollars a month per recycling facility is passed out in cash to the people that come there. That money goes back into your community, because what they do with it is buy things. These are people, many people in your community are very poor, and they depend on this extra money to augment their money, such as gas money and medicine and groceries. I mean, this is something that is essential for many of the people that are your poorer people in Bakersfield, and there are quite a few of them. I can bet that even people in the apartment probably have roommates and things to help pay their rent, and they would, if they had an opportunity and if they were close, they would probably appreciate having a nice recycling facility. You have a young person here who is graduate of your local college, who has already proven himself in your community with several others, where he has not been fined, he has had no use permits revoked. It's a good business for somebody to come around and pick up any carts that somebody brings, because they, when they take them back to the grocery stores, the grocery stores pay him or her for bringing them back. And so he has someone on his staff that goes around, and if they find any, they clean them up. He trains all his staff. They are trained to make sure things are clean, they button everything up. One of the concerns about the neighbors was blight, and I have a picture, I don't know if you've seen it, of the property now, but the property now is just, I don't know, this would help. I guess it's too small. Well, let me just say, it's a bare lot on one side, has no paving. At one side, it must have. What I saw there today was litter on one of the street. There was some old chair thrown away there. The paving is gone, the, no landscaping. Talk about blight, I wouldn't, I'd say it's not the most favorable-looking place. The applicant is proposing to come in, put a recycling center that's screened, landscaped, put in street trees, make the place look presentable. It's understandably not attractive. He's not there to make, he doesn't want to make it look bad. He lives in this community, too, and has pride. And so it's important to him to make it both reasonably clean, that it's landscaped, it's improved, it serves the community. There's no reason to believe that if you give people no money, that they'll not steal anything anymore. If there are people that do that in the neighborhood, let's, and if you give them more money to spend, then they're going to stop, start stealing. Doesn't, kind of the connection isn't there. So with his businesses, I wanted to tell you that last year, in the city of Bakersfield, throughout his recycling facilities and your facility, he distributed more than $2 million into your community. And I like the way that you started off this afternoon, much earlier, on the fiscal outlook. You started out with business attraction and business retention was one of your first priorities, and then you went on to appoint somebody to make into a Bakersfield beautiful committee. Well, that's what he wants to do. He's trying to keep litter off the street. He's fulfilling what your general plan says is to, of course, eliminate land waste. Who wouldn't? So that's exactly what he wants to do. And if you have a young man in the community, raised here, that's proven himself to do a good job, if you look at the site plan, it's not in the neighborhood, it's right at the edge with major streets running through. It's the only convenience zone, only facility that would be in this convenience zone. Another, the applicant referred to another nearby convenience zone, but that was his, and the property was sold, and he has to relocate. So that was in the convenience zone, now it's not. But now he's looking for another place, and this place where he is proposing to locate fills that demand. So that's my conclusion, that he's proven himself to be worthy of it and can do a good operation and serve your community well with the $2,000 very quickly handed out to the public.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to Steph's recommendation? At this time, there's an opportunity to rebut statements. We were kind of out of order, but it's the opportunity now to rebut in opposition. Actually, it's okay, we're flipping it around, but go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Go. Councilmembers, Russell Johnson, again, Common Sense Consulting. Want to address a few comments made by the applicant's representative and the applicant. In regards to their facility being maintained and kept nice, that's not the main concern of St. Clair Investments or of the neighbors. It's the off-site impacts. It's the, what happens when the shopping carts end up in the neighborhoods? What happens when the trash that wasn't accepted at the CRV facility finds its way to the neighborhoods? It's the, those residual impacts that are the concern, not their site. Also, the convenience zone, I think, is being overstated in this case. The convenience zone is a designation for retailers. It really has little impact in terms of convenience for the public, and we've already shown that there's an abundance of access to recycling within the metropolitan area. Also, within this location and within this neighborhood, there's a number of facilities nearby. Furthermore, I would like to point out that it's nice to state anecdotal evidence in terms of a facility that's been there for many, many years, in terms of the Smart and Final. It's not like it's a brand-new facility. It's been there for at least 10 years that I can recall, maybe more, but there's no supporting documentation from that facility saying that they need a convenience zone or that they are requesting the convenience zone designation. And even if they did, there's more than enough ample evidence that the city could help them with an exemption for that convenient zone based upon the fact that we have an abundance of recycling opportunities in the city. So I think this level of attention focused on the convenience zone provides that there's some sort of state law that says it has to go into place, when in reality, the convenience zone, I think, the convenience zone is being overstated, and in reality, it still requires a conditional use permit and an approval by your body and the Board of Zoning Adjustment. And I will remind you that the Board of Zoning Adjustment voted two-to-zero to deny this request because it wasn't a good fit. It wasn't in the right place, and it's not a good fit for this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Frank St. Clair, there is one item that I wish to rebut that I would agree with the applicant on, and that is, some of the newfound wealth of some of the people is being spent on alcohol and drugs, and they wind up on our lawns and in our neighborhoods, passed out. And I've noticed this has happened more frequently by my house, which is by a recycling center now, and I imagine if I had a recycle center by my office, I would have some of the same behavior. So that's a problem we have. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to rebut? Thank you. Now, there is an opportunity for the other side to rebut. You have five minutes.
The state of California and your staff has this information. This is a bona fide convenience zone identified in emails to your staff, and if they're not, if it's not, if there's not a recycling center in there, there will be fines to Smart and Final. And so they know that. And I think, looking more globally, don't blame recycling centers and our efforts to clean up and sustain your communities on the homeless. It's a bigger problem than you can ever blame on anything. If you want to blame it on recycling facilities, hit McDonald's with their dollar deals, hit the Dollar Store, get rid of them, get rid of your library, because people go in there during the day to get out of the rain. I mean, it's a bigger social problem, and it's a shame that we have to blame recycling centers or any one thing when it's something that's much deeper than that. So I just urge you to provide this opportunity to your homeboy and who's got a track record of goodness in your community and only wants the best for it. And their facility is not right directly across the street, it's kind of a corner across the street. They have to pass this place now to get home. It sure would be nice to pass something with some street trees and looking nice and resources available to make your community more strong physically and more attractive.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to rebut? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing now and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you. That was good. You did, both sides, appreciate both sides being here. You know, it's really a pretty simple issue in the sense that the Board of Zoning Adjustments has already heard the issue and I'm sure did consider all of the aspects of the application, and they, you know, they voted to deny the application. And I think the main reason, well, two things stand out in my mind. Number one, there is another recycling center less than a mile away up on White Lane. This is Plans and up on White Lane. So it's not that far away, but these are intended for commercial areas, and this basically is a residential area. And I'm sure that the residents appreciate the fact of the work that was done collecting these signatures. So, and I'm sure that weighed heavily on the hearing with the BZA. So it being a residential area, there's nothing else. It's not commercial, it's residential. And so I admire young entrepreneurs, but it was denied, and so I feel it's my responsibility to respect the reasons that it was denied by our BZA and recommended this council. And then, I mean, this is, this is city government at its best again. You applied, you were denied, you are appealing the deny, the denial, and you did a great job, but really, it is residential. I live right down the street, and there's no commercial, it's all residential. So I appreciate, good job, Russell, you've done a good job, and a lot of work was done to make, to do everything possible to uphold the decision of the BZA and keep the denial in place. So that's what I'm recommending to the council tonight. So thank you.
I see no other lights. Councilmember Sullivan, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I do recommend to the council that we uphold the decision of the BZA and vote, let's see, is that voting yes to, yes to, yes, to support the, to support the denial of the application. Thank you.
So we're voting in support of Steph's recommendation now. You have a motion, please cast your vote.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under hearings, we have a public hearing to consider an action plan amendment to the following U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development action plans. Number one, fiscal year 2014-15, amendment number seven, transfer funds from Martin Luther King Community Center Gym Rehabilitation to Bakersfield Senior Center Gate Improvements. Number two, fiscal year 2015-16, amendment number three, transfer funds from Community Housing Development Organization, set aside, to self-help enterprises down payment assistance. And number three, fiscal year 2016-17, amendment number three, transfer funds from CHDO, set aside, to self-help enterprises down payment assistance.
Thank you. Ms. Kitchen?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. This item was incorrectly noticed. After we placed this on the agenda, we realized it needs to be renoticed, so we're recommending that it be referred back for renoticing, and it will come back before your council in November.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open, oh, nobody's here.
It's my understanding, then, that since it'll be renoticed, you don't need to, you don't need to, I suppose you don't need to open the hearing, then, since it's going to be renoticed.
Okay. Thank you. So no further action on this item? And next item, please.
Under new business, item A, California Water Service Company franchise renewal.
Mr. Tandy?
Mayor Go, members of council, Mr. Tellia has a riveting PowerPoint on this issue, but this is an item with three or four council actions. You've seen it before. So given the lateness of the hour, staff recommends you just vote to approve the resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I will move to approve the resolutions.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items. The confusion that we've had tonight and have had various other times on whether or not we can make a motion and, or not make a motion, I would like legal, I've been to other city councils or things, and they have action item and non-action item, and maybe that would make it clear that, you know, we're not going to make a motion on this. Maybe that would be a way to clarify that and move forward. So that's one item. The other thing was, we had in the past brought forward NACTO guidelines, National Association City Transportation Officials, to try and look at different ways for City Transportation Officials, to try and look at different ways for pedestrian and bicycle access. As a reference guide, the council at that time, I do not believe was quite as bicycle or pedestrian friendly as it seems to be now. So, I would like to refer that item back to Planning and Development Committee, and perhaps we can bring that back again as a reference. And also, Councilmember Freeman mentioned speed limits and different ways to look at them. And just this August, the National Transportation Safety Association released a study that, you know, speed is de facto in 30% of the fatalities across the nation, and that they are recommending that states look at that 85 percentile rule that uses, but if there are ways to reduce speed through design, they recommend that. Also, enforcement. And we've talked about lane widths and different designs before, which Mr. Freeman also recommended. So, I would like to refer, you know, maybe, I know we're looking at our street standards and to look at them with the eye of trying to slow speeds, I think is a good idea. So, I would refer that also to the Planning and Development Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parlier?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items here. First one, I received a letter from Clay Suskin, and he was very appreciative of the Public Works Department and Roads Department. And I just want to quote a couple of the things that he put here regarding some street work that was done in front of his house. He says that the performance was excellent, crew exhibited efficiency, worked safely through the process, and obviously, it shows that that department is run with superior supervision and management, and a thanks to the public employees there. So, kudos to Public Works and Roads. Appreciate it, Nick. Thank you so much. There was an Oxnard police officer, motor officer, that was injured in Kern County, and he was lifelighted to KMC with a severe injury. He's been in hospital for a long time. And I went by and visited the Police Department, Oxnard Police Department, family and stuff that was there at the hospital. And Chief Whitney of the Oxnard Police Department was so appreciative of this community for the support that was provided to his Police Department and to that family. And he wanted me to express the thanks to our community, Bakersfield's Police Department, Sheriff's Department, local CHP, Bakersfield Police Officers Association, Kern Law Enforcement Association, and the Kern County 999 Officer Down Foundation for their support. The 26th of October, Councilman Rivera and I are going to be doing our annual trunk-or-treat event at Plans Park, and it's right on the line in both of our areas, and we're going to be passing out candy to local kids. And it's a great event every year, and he's got me to dress up the last couple of years. We'll see about this year, too. And last item, the Fresno Police Department runs a anti-sexual trafficking, kind of John School, and they've had some success with it. I would like an informational item brought to safe neighborhoods on this program and see if it's something we want to hear. That's it. Hope you have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just very briefly, I appreciate the wonderful entertainment that AEG is bringing to our I attend many of the concerts, most of them, actually. Attended the Tim and Faith, and it is such a thrill to see that the, just almost every seat was filled. It was a wonderful, wonderful concert, and we really enjoyed it. And tomorrow night, America will be at the amphitheater, and we'll be there, enjoying, enjoying the entertainment. But we're lucky to have Steve. He's working hard, you know, very, very good to work with. But we really, we really have a lot to do here in town, and the city of Bakersfield certainly more than does their part for, in every way possible. So, just appreciate Steve. What is his last name? I'm sorry.
I'm Chris.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Dried a blank there. But anyway, we're lucky to have him. He's really enjoying being part of our entertainment area for the city. But appreciate AEG for the good job they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. We've noticed that one of our flags is a bit tattered, and we are very grateful that we've received a flag today from Congressman Kevin McCarthy, and I'd like to read to you what he wrote. "The flag of the United States of America. This is to certify that the accompanying flag was flown over the United States Capitol at the request of the Honorable Kevin McCarthy, Member of Congress." He writes this to us, "God bless Bakersfield, Kevin McCarthy." So, we're very grateful, Congressman, for this flag, and I will be giving it to our city manager for City Hall North. Thank you very much. If there are no other comments, we stand adjourned at 9:04.
The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 city council meeting of October 11th, 2017. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
To comply with the Brown Act, we'll receive public statements now. Please limit your comments to the workshop and closed-session items only at this time. All statements are given a three-to-five-minute, three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per subject. Are there any public statements? Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under workshops, we have the 2018 Regional Transportation Plan, Sustainable Community Strategy, Key Land Use and Planning Assumptions, and Public Outreach.
Thank you. Mr. Fidler?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, every four years, Kern Council of Governments updates their regional transportation plan. Rob Ball, Director of Planning for Kern Council of Governments, will be providing an update this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. We work closely with your staff. Kern Council of Governments fills, or we consider ourselves an extension of the city of Bakersfield's staff here. And so, it's a good honor to kind of get together every once in a while and let you see some more of your staff that works in, you know, a couple of blocks away. And so, what we have here for you is a course correction or a course check on our long-range transportation plan. It goes out about 24 years, and so, we're required by state law to come and speak with you about some of the assumptions that are in that plan. We're not looking at major changes within this plan in this go-around, but I'll highlight some of those. You have a little cover letter that talks about the timeline KernCog, which Vice Mayor Smith serves on as our, on the, on the board, has an opportunity to provide input in the adoption coming up as early as May of next year. And we're going out to all the outline communities. In your packet attached to that is some new, good news about updates on SB1 funding for the city of Bakersfield, as well as the other communities. Even though we're seeing an increase in SB1 funding, it's really only about 40% of what is actually needed to bring our roads up to full maintenance. About 60% of the funding in SB1 is for maintenance, and it is requiring the state to pay back past loans. And there's a column in there of some of the funding that you're going to be getting in payback of past loans directly to the city. We also have a little summary breakdown by, well, let me talk about this one here first. The overall transportation funding, how much we're seeing coming from each of the sources. There is even something in here called potential new revenue, and we put this in the 2014 Regional Transportation Plan, and we have seen through SB1 and state cap and trade additional funding coming into the region. And your community has been very aggressive in going after some of those new grant funding sources. The expenditures and some of the benefits, for example, we're looking at total jobs generated over the 20-year period being about 75,000 job year, or jobs within the region long-term. Also, there's a breakout of each of the subareas. On the back of that first packet, you can see the Metropolitan Bakersfield. We're showing in the early expenditure category about 62.8% of the funding, and Metropolitan Bakersfield has about 61.5% of the county population share. Also, within your packet is, and this is, this is your homework, the list of transportation projects. And this is one of the things that we're seeing, some changes to this regional transportation plan. You have fix-it-first funding, which is primarily your maintenance funding in here. Regional projects within the Metropolitan Bakersfield area, and there's an extensive list of those projects. Some of them, you'll note, are already completed. And then, there's something called advanced tech, safe, clean transportation. This is everything from transit to bike and pedestrian projects. And the bulk of the, or the primary change from the 2014 RTPA is we've greatly expanded the list of pedestrian projects, as well as updated the bike list through an active transportation plan that is now available for public review and a final draft. This active transportation plan is the culmination of considerable public outreach and input within this area. They did special bike or pedestrian walk audits throughout the county with, with local city staff in that process. So, what we're asking today is for feedback on this draft list prior to going out for public review, and you have till November 30th to provide us that feedback. So, if you want to contact us individually, or if you want to work through staff at the city in reviewing this list of projects, giving us any input, we're very interested. What we'll then do is incorporate that information, that feedback, prior to the release of the environmental document this winter. Also included, if you're not really interested in looking at 12 pages of tables, there is, there are some maps. The first map is a map of the pedestrian projects, followed by about five maps of the bicycle projects within the Metropolitan Bakersfield region. And then, one of the key areas here, you'll have, there is a brochure here that talks about the regional transportation plan. We've been, over the past two and a half, three years, we've engaged over 5,000 community members within Metropolitan Bakersfield and surrounding communities in providing input. And what we've primarily heard is maintain, fix, and finish what we already have. And the, this includes maintaining our roads, increasing bicycle paths, those types of things. The summary of benefits that's included has some interesting statistics. For example, we're projecting a 5% or more reduction in health expenditures because of improved air quality from this regional transportation plan, based upon comparison to prior plans. But also, in the back of this are some planning assumption maps. And what you'll notice here is that in the project assumptions map, there's a lot of red lines, and these are projects that are not funded in this plan and would require additional funding somewhere down the road to be able to get those, those projects going. One of the things that we've noticed is that if we can find additional revenue sources, that we can deliver projects earlier. And by delivering projects earlier, you're saving the increase in the construction cost index on those roads, and the cost goes down so you can deliver more projects by delivering them earlier. And so, what we're showing in this information is what that potential benefit is. There's also some land use planning assumptions in here that we've worked closely with your staff. We use your local general plan in our planning assumptions, so we reflect that very closely. But we've also developed some principles in the policy section of the regional transportation plan that we haven't made very many changes from the prior RTP, but they take into account concepts such as transit priority place types. And that's the idea where you kind of create a concentration of activity that promotes bike and pedestrian and walking activity around, say, a transit hub or a major transit center. And those have the connectivity to allow for easier ways to get around through the metropolitan area. And so, promoting some of the infill and some of the benefits there is within there. It's certainly not everything that we do in terms of, you'll see, there's also a balance of growth in both the periphery and within the metropolitan core area. But it's important that we provide the incentives necessary to make that, those types of development within the metropolitan core area competitive for housing within the region and actually lower the overall cost of housing for everyone. So, finally, let's see, that concludes my presentation. Here's, the current 2014 Regional Transportation Plan is available on KernCog's website, and you can go out to kerncog.org and get a link to it, also the Directions 2050 website. If you have any questions or comments, we'd be happy to take them at this time. Again, you have till November 30th to provide us feedback at this stage, and there'll be other opportunities down the road.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Good to see you, Rob, and I really just want to say we appreciate the work KernCog does with the city, most recently on the trip projects, a great partner and have helped us work with Caltrans and get Caltrans to fund some of the projects and help us with special grants and creative ways to help us reduce our ultimate borrowing on all those projects. Really appreciate the help. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ball. Next item, please. Madam Clerk?
Under closed session, item A, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation regarding checks and balances project versus the city of Bakersfield. And item B, conference with legal counsel. And item B, conference with legal counsel, potential litigation, one matter.
Vice Mayor?
Adjourn to closed session, please.
Adjourn to closed session.